...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for last Thursday's?
I make a motion that we can pass the minutes. I'll second.
Any further discussion about all the?
Well, good morning.
Ah.
We have a visitor this morning.
This is my mom Irene Welling.
Hi Irene.
Nice to meet you.
Vicky Klein, Kathleen Chandler, and Marie Frederick.
Very nice to meet you.
My mom's sister Irene.
You have a lovely son.
Doris Timoney and her other sister Kayma Marazo.
Oh wow.
Cheers.
Oh wow. I've got my children.
Timothy's my daughter. I've noticed.
Okay, so we're here to celebrate your birthday today.
Hi Irene, how are you? How are you?
I remember Irene.
And Kathleen was a commissioner.
Kathleen, my dear Kathleen.
And then he wasn't.
Irene, uh, someone you're telling you're here maybe for some tickets or something? Tickets? Well, you know, we just happened to, uh, we just happened to have a proclamation this morning for you.
Oh my.
So if you'll allow us, we would like to read it.
Thank you.
Proclamation honoring Irene Timoney Schultz-Welling for her outstanding contributions to Portage County. Whereas Irene Lorraine Timoney was born on September 18th, 1925, in Hoboken, New Jersey, to Marie Omeria and Joseph Timoney. Irene was one of seven children, including Marie, Joseph Sonny, Lorraine, Kathleen, Doris, and John. Irene attended grade school in Hoboken, New Jersey at Our Lady of Grace and graduated from the Sacred Heart Academy, also in Hoboken. In 1944 Irene graduated from Drake Business School in New York City in, in 1946 and worked for Charles of the Ritz in New York City until 1950. And whereas Irene Timoney met Joseph Schultz on a blind date in June 1947 after he returned from serving in the Marines during World War II. They were engaged by September and married in October 1948. Irene and Joe brought their first home in Mount Glen Lakes, New Jersey, where they lived until 1961, when the family moved to Shaler'sville Township, beautiful downtown Shaler'sville. Irene and Joe were blessed with seven children, Karen, Deb. Do we know Deb? Irene, Bob, Patty, Joe, and Marie. Irene is the proud grandmother of 14 grandchildren and has two great-granddaughters and another one on the way. And?
Whereas, it's right here.
Yes ma'am, yes.
Irene has been a member of St. Joseph Catholic Church in Manaway since 1961, offering her time and talents to the church throughout those years. She was one of the chairpersons for the first Ox Rose Fair and acted for many years in that capacity. She served several terms as president of the Home School and School Association while her children attended St. Joseph Elementary School and as a president of St. Joseph Cares for 15 years. She was involved in Brownies, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, sports, band, bake sales, et cetera. Irene was also active in the altar and Rosary Society, church council fundraisers, and countless other activities involving St. Joseph Church. Irene is currently active in the Silver Sneakers Program in Manaway and served as a member for seniors and widows in our Manaway community. And whereas?
I just want to know what you did in your spare time. Whereas we honor Irene Welling as she celebrates her 90th birthday on September 18th, 2015, now therefore be it resolved that the Portage County Board of Commissioners recognizes and thanks Irene Welling for her dedicated service to the residents of Portage County. The Board of Commissioners extends its best wishes upon Irene's birthday and wishes her happiness in her life's pursuits and new adventures. And be it further resolved that the Portage County Board of Commissioners wishes Irene a happy 90th birthday and proudly proclaims Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015, in Portage County, Irene Timoney Schultz-Welling Day.
I thank you very much. I didn't know I was so good.
Why don't you come on here and get some pictures. Come around.
Were you a little bit surprised?
I was totally surprised. They were doing that all week long. I saw my granddaughter come out of a store and I didn't know it was her. I figured, she looks like Megan.
Why don't you all come at me?
Yes, oh everyone, come on, yes, come on, come on. Come on.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
These are my sister's camera. She almost died when she saw us.
We can all in?
I talked to her on the phone. If you turn the, the.
No.
Zoom in now.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine.
Group up here. Group up closer.
You need us closer?
Nope, that's good.
You got it already?
Not yet. Okay, ready?
Gee.
One, two.
Good.
Look good?
Yeah.
Good.
All right, all right. That must be a great calendar. A calendar. Camera.
What kind of calendar are you talking about?
Exactly.
All right, now we gotta cut the cake, right?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, there she is. Thank you for all you've done and all your wonderful children.
Thank you.
We have some, uh.
Just the usual, draft appointments of the Portage County Emergency Management Agency for Debbie Chitster.
Thank you so much for coming.
This is Ernest Hennig.
You don't have to take a hint. Aw, come on. Have a great day. Now your girls go out and shop the town now, okay?
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Are we on? Are we? Is it going?
This one?
No.
But you know, that does that all the time, Amy.
Yeah, like 30 seconds.
Yeah, whatever.
So we're okay to?
This one says we're going.
Okay, back on point here.
All right, draft appointment to the Portage County EMA Advisory Committee, Ms. Debbie Chitster, for appointment, as recommended by Joe Cabaretta.
I make a motion to appoint to the Portage County Emergency Management Agency EMA Advisory Council Debbie?
Chitster.
Chitster, replacing Joseph Cabaretta.
Second.
Any further discussion? Debbie will be, uh, be red cross?
Yes ma'am.
Red cross. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
All right, and there's a supporting documents for that. Uh, the next one is a journal entry to extend the FY 2014 Emergency Management Performance Grant Special Project Communication Update. We finished half the portion of the grant, we're just trying to extend. It's gonna do the period to September 30th, 2015. It extends it till March next year, 2016. So we just need a journal entry to approve.
Oh, good. Okay, and that's a journal entry?
It was an email.
Yes.
What'd you say, Amy?
I was looking for some backup, but.
Oh.
So the next paragraph would be?
Do you need this?
There it is. We can, it's an email right now. They're back behind in grant section.
Okay, you have sufficient backup? Okay, yeah.
The auditor's office has it, so I'll send you another copy. So we just need to do a journal entry.
Okay. Okay, we've done it.
Well, then I wanted to have a little further discussion on that grant. The EOC, about two months prior to the contract with AT&amp;T for the VoIP phones, we wrote this grant to put hardline internet and phone lines into there. Being that the phones are VoIP and not copper anymore, we are kinda revising, we're meeting with vendors, put the infrastructure in, but also make it look pretty. I don't want wires and spaghetti going around. So we're looking at the realignment of the EOC. I mean, we're gonna keep that typical U shape, or that circle shape, it may have to come in a little tighter. So I just want to let you guys know, there is gonna be some upgrades in there that allow me to use the VoIP phones.
Reconfiguration?
Yeah, you're gonna see a phone at each table now.
Okay.
That's there for each ESF during an emergency.
ESF?
Emergency Support Function.
Okay.
So you see some changes in the EOC, all for communications upgrade. There was a quick little ad for the EMA Command Center. Did everybody get a copy of?
Yes.
The recent quote to get this fixed?
Who gave you this one?
This is from Joe Dillon.
That's what I thought it was, it looked like it was, but I didn't like the other two things we got.
Is this the one?
This was in an email, I just printed it in my.
Was this the 4,000, or there was a, there was also like 9,000?
This is?
Two different vehicles, right?
Yeah, the 9,000 was from last year to rerun the wires and do an alignment. This recently, the Command Center, we were gonna take it to the Ravenna Cruisin' and it wouldn't start.
Yes.
And the engine, ECU, Engine Control Unit was, check engine light was on, and we got it towed to Freightliner in Youngstown. And so to reinstall drive line from tow, replace Engine Control Unit, start M-Stack switch, program ECU and retest, we're looking at $4,000 in expenses. So on top of, you'll see another group of line items that need to be done for 2431. And then I provided the old quotes. Some of these line items, we were able to get fixed with the fire departments. The biggest issue is probably the correct power shore generating wiring system. It's a 3835. So overall, we're probably in the 10,000 range. I did budget appropriately for this, this year. But I only have so much, so this is gonna take probably 90% of that. So if there is another heavy maintenance here in the future, I'm hoping we can get by this year, but.
I have some questions about the cost. These are just simply for parts, right? Cause we pay labor costs.
Well, the 4,090 is, is outsourced, so we're gonna have to pay labor.
That's for labor.
Cause they don't have the facility to bring the command post into. It's so big.
But below additional repairs, uh, safety inspection, that's labor, that's not parts. Why are they charging us?
That I don't know. Safety inspection, I don't know why that would be in there. That's something I have to ask Joe.
There should be no charge. Unless, is it electric?
Unless there is parts that are involved with that, but I don't, I don't see that. I don't know if that's outsourced either.
He wouldn't know if there were parts left of the inspection, right?
Right.
So I have a question about that.
Okay, so with the motor pool, they just charge us for parts and we pay for the labor out of the general fund? Is that the way that goes?
Well, they're, they're, uh, general fund.
Yes.
The other thing now, I know it's a large vehicle and I don't know about prices except for my car. But it seems like for an air filter, 87, 28 is very high.
Well, I, that I couldn't tell you left and right on a, I'm not a vehicle guy myself, so I imagine it could be probably a lot more expensive than a car.
And then, we usually run home. And then, adjust all tire pressures, costs $28, that couldn't be.
To door placard specifications. I don't know why that would need. So there's some line items we need to take a look at here.
Maybe, do they have to have a compressor maybe to?
I imagine he has one.
Those are huge tires.
He should have an air compressor that can fill the tires. I don't, maybe some of this has to be outsourced, I don't know. This is what I just received.
We need a better explanation of what's going on here.
Okay.
Okay, do you agree?
And what was the date on this email, Ryan, this one?
Last week.
Oh, okay, so this is current.
Yeah, we do want to proceed with having a fix, but.
Okay. We just want a better idea of what the charges are.
And you're, no matter what, you're going to be able to, it's in your budget.
It is. We, we did budget for it this year. I set aside 15,000 for maintenance on equipment. Like I said, this is gonna take a large portion of it, so hopefully we can go unscathed the rest of the year.
All right, and we would like, on future correspondence, where it's from, the date.
Okay. And then, just for this week, I am going down to Columbus. I'm not sure who the signatory would be. But that's for Thursday, I have an after action meeting for that Guardian Shield exercise at Ohio Emergency Management, and that's just to approve travel there. I'm gonna be in Columbus for the next three days, but I'll be back early on Thursday. That's it for me.
Sure.
One more.
Can I pass this to you?
That's Debbie's.
Thank you.
Debbie's application, I just need your signature and I'll make copies for.
Do you need to get it back right now, Ryan?
Yes ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And you'll get this all too, Amy, and what else, or else she needs?
We'll walk right out here and make copies directly. All right, thank you.
Do you just need one signature?
Yes, that's perfect.
How to say it, sir?
You will, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Prosecutor's office.
Would you like to do resolutions?
Sure, sure. A motion to approve the Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015 bills, ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second to the, um, motion. Any further discussion? We'll call, please, Amy.
Vicky? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second to motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's no wire transfers today? Evidently not. I, I think, yes, I do, maybe we better check on that. Discussion items, um, this next was from Family and Community Services about the, uh, the, oh my gosh, the license fees, which typically have gone to them for, um, I wanted to say recovery house, I don't mean that, or the Miller House. So.
So we need a resolution, is that what we need?
Yes, if that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion for a resolution, uh, for Family and Community Services regarding 2016 distribution of marriage and divorce fees. You know, I'm not quite sure what that is. I mean, I'm not questioning making the resolution, but what is that? Marriage and divorce fees?
Just on the back. Yeah, just a packet.
Just turn the whole thing over.
Right.
Two.
Oh, one.
D1.
Yeah, last page.
Did anybody, did anybody detect, identify how much is in that fund? I was looking for it, or maybe I just overlooked it. Hmm, I don't know. I, I couldn't find it anywhere. And I mean, they, they have quite a few attachments.
Every year we do this and.
Yes.
Yeah, I took it as such.
It was just, it would be nice to know how much.
It's 465,000.
455?
Wait, just a minute, 465,000.
That's their budget, isn't it?
Yeah, that's their budget, and the federal grant is 369,868 dollars. State grant is 28,572.
So would you consider that the fees then, or is this in addition to the fees? I mean, is, are the fees just not identified, they just get that, anyway? It just was a curiosity. It's not, nothing to, to refer with us passing the resolution.
No, I, yeah, I just, yeah, further clarification, I guess.
So is there a second?
I second the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Do you want to just pass a wire resolution, and if we don't need it, it'll be okay? Can you just pass a wire resolution?
Yeah, wouldn't hurt.
That would be happy if we needed it.
Improve the Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015.
Wire transfers.
Wire transfers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Vicky? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes. That was a very good way to handle it.
Just cover ourselves, right?
Okay. The next is, uh, payment of 17.66 and 97 cents to Maggie Lewis. And this will be paid by Water Resources. So we can add that to journal entries for today.
And, and I suggest that we just terminate her services.
I would prefer that we allow her to write her final report because otherwise we spent this money and we're not getting full benefit from it. And I think.
From our conversation, I don't think we've got full benefit anyway, I truly don't.
Well, I think that if we allow her to write her final report and send it to us, it'd be a very minor expense, and it would allow us to have the benefit of the money that we've already spent, because I believe she's going to give us much more detail than what we've received so far.
I wonder if we can, we had the conversation with her, and it was, um, it was alarming to me also, but I wonder if we can find out what this report will entail. I mean, just exactly, what, what are we talking here? We'd have to have some idea of how much, but I think, what I recall from that conversation, she had said that there was a list of things that had been gone over, they had been meeting. I'd like us to have all the backup, um, from the Water Resource people that were meeting. I would assume they have kept a written record of all of that. So when Jeff comes in today, I'd like us to talk to him about retrieving all that information. So that we have something that we can read and we can go on. I, I really still had a void as to what was accomplished.
Personally, I just, I felt she was talking to me like I was in first grade or something, and she was explaining communication. And I'm thinking, I'm way past that, but you know, that was just my, my opinion.
I, I didn't get that impression at all. I, I believe that the whole purpose of mediation is that you bring people together, you talk about the issues in a structured environment, and try to come up with recommendations for a resolution. And I believe that that's what Ms. Lewis did. And so until we see the final report, we're not going to get the kind of information that we had hoped. And so, um, I don't, I think that she's done what we've asked her to do.
She did not do what we asked her to do, Kathleen, for the record. We asked her to speak to each one of those individuals individually, and then she felt it would be good to bring them all together. She did not do that, and that was plain.
What we actually agreed to do was to hire her to do a mediation, and she did a mediation. I'm not sure that we should be telling her how to do her job, and I think that's the problem here, that, um.
You know, I don't disagree with that, Kathleen, except we did have a conversation with her at the time.
And if she didn't want to do the job the way we asked her to, she should have just said, you know, that's not the way I do it and I can't do it, because.
I'd like to have an idea of what this final report would represent dollar wise.
That's what we need, we need to find that out, and I would think it would be a small amount, since she's already done all of the work, she came up here. The, the cost that she's charging is, I think, very reasonable, but I think unless we get the final report, um, we're not going to have the full benefit of the money that we've already spent.
Well, if it, I don't disagree with that either, if it is a substantive report. Again, based on the phone conversation, I didn't get a lot of substance out of that phone conversation. So I, I don't know how to go about retrieving that, or getting her to give us a finite, what is going to be in there. So now I'm back to what I was suggesting, when Jeff comes in, I'd like us to talk about what happened out there, and what progress they've made, and if they have anything recorded, I'd like to see that too.
And the, the true results of this exercise will be whether or not the, there's been a resolution to the, to the issues that have caused so much tension.
Right.
And now if that's resolved, then this is certainly money well spent.
If it, yes, agreed. I, I don't know, I, I had no conversation with the supervisors or, or the overall supervisor. So again, why don't we wait for Jeff to go into executive session?
Sure.
And can we also get an estimate of the, of the final report, and then if it's within a reasonable amount, go ahead and ask for the final report?
Sure. Let's get, let's get the estimate, how much is that gonna be?
Sure. So we'll just hold this till after we talk to Jeff? Is that what we're doing? Well, you know, we need to pay this no matter what.
Yes, yes. We'll add this to journal entry to pay that.
Yes, we need to pay this no matter what.
Do the commissioners choose to participate in government day? Is this, uh, this is leadership, is it?
Right, I think so, yes.
I, that's what I thought, so we're going to participate.
Sure.
I don't know if they need acknowledgement. Was this Dave McIntyre coordinating that this year, or Ryan?
You know, I'm not sure, I have to ask that.
Yeah, it came from Ryan, and I don't know why.
It's like down here at 2:30.
Okay. So you'll mark that on your calendars for December 3rd. And the next is quite a, uh, quite a, I want to say packet, from Mr. Crawford.
Oh, Crawford.
So, I bet you just read that as you will, and the remaining for today will be the journal entries, which you have time later ago, and we'll deal with those later.
As I read this from Mr. Crawford, I think it's very, um, rewarding that he wants to do all the work to collect this kind of data, and I think it would be helpful to us. The only thing that I feel that I'm not interested in following up on is the contract. I have no interest whatsoever in signing a document that way, because that's our responsibility to do anyway, but the.
When we take our oath of office, that's what they say.
One and two, exactly. Yes, so, you know, we're obliged to do those kinds of things anyway, but number one and two would be really great if, um, if he can come up with that kind of information in the report, it would be very helpful to the, to us as well as to the public, I think.
I, uh.
It's very generous.
I directly encouraged him, but I did get back to Mr. Zawikowski. I encourage Mr. Crawford to apply for the other, for the, one of the two public representatives that he has done a standing job.
Sure.
Yes, it's very generous of him to want to do this, and he was very interested in it.
He ought to do that. Okay. Okay. The prosecutor is here, is not here?
She's at 10.
Oh, she's not here then?
She's not here.
Until 11?
10.
10. Okay.
Todd and Janet.
Okay, if they're here, bring them in.
Victor and Joanne wanted to come see you.
Bring them in.
That's okay, is that all right?
Sure.
That's fine. Okay, so, I think if we ever, when we have damage, I'm gonna feel guilty.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Do we have anything that I've tagged from the, um, information only?
I think it might have been attached to the.
To the other ones, 54.
Oh, yes.
Oh, there, I think that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yes, I know you have that. And they are in compliance.
Yes.
I give you that. I wonder how that came about?
Oh, it's probably a routine inspection.
Yeah, I didn't know if someone had complained that there was.
Oh, it said they reviewed the documentation of corrective action, so evidently there was a problem.
There was a sighting before, which I was.
That is something that's done every year, I would think, right?
Probably so.
Well, you know, when you see the word radiation, I, I think, how could that be out there? But yeah, it could be.
Metal detectors. Metal detectors, most likely.
Ah.
Oh, that's right. I'm telling what it is.
It's at 10.
Oh, she's not here then?
She's not here.
Until 11?
10.
10. Okay. Whoopsie.
Todd and Janet.
Okay, if they're here, bring them in.
Joanne wanted to come see you.
Bring them in.
That's okay. Is that all right?
Sure.
That's fine. I think if we ever, when we have damage, I'm going to feel guilty.
If we have anything that I've got from the information only?
I think it might have been attached to the...
To the other ones.
Yes.
Oh, there, I think that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yes. And they were in compliance.
Yes.
I give you that. I wonder how that came about?
Well, it's probably a routine inspection.
Yeah, I didn't know if someone had complained that there was...
Well, it said they reviewed the documentation of corrective action, so evidently there was a problem.
There was a sighting before, which I was...
It's something that's done every year, I would think, right?
Probably so.
Well, you know, when you see the word radiation, I think, how could that be out there? But yeah, it could be.
Metal detectors. Metal detectors, most likely.
Ah.
Oh, that's right. I'm telling you what it is.
Scanners at the courthouse have to be checked in.
Okay.
You actually have to license those for radiation.
Yeah.
That's, that's good. Yeah. Interesting. How was your day, Ms. James?
Did Mr. Ames want to talk to us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Were you here for the sales tax open meeting or...?
Well, I'll be back for that.
Okay.
I just...
Denise is going to come in in a few minutes, so maybe we should wait till she arrives?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Right, yeah. I'm here for your convenience.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, Todd and, Todd and Joanne and Randy?
No, um, kids. Oh, Janet.
What is the, what is the agenda?
Human resources.
Oh, okay. I thought, okay.
Are you available to come up? Okay, thanks. This is about the HR director.
Todd, you got flipped?
Yes. Todd and Janet.
Are you joining the service, Alice? You are, aren't you?
I actually like it this way, but I'm too cheap to custom get one, so I go between extremes.
I said the same thing to him yesterday, I go, you got paused.
Well, see, I didn't see him yesterday, so...
Well, being that he's an economist, I'm not surprised.
Do your sons, I know that you have a horse.
They, when they were younger, they all were very short.
Oh, but now...
Now, more fashionable to have a little longer.
Yeah. You know, my sons, I did it myself and I just showed.
Yeah, that's what we do.
I did.
My, two of my sons have straighter hair, my wife has straight hair. I don't mind it when it's straight as long, but two of my sons have a little bit kinky, not curly, but like just kinky.
Yeah, mine's kind of way, yeah.
I try to get them to keep it a little shorter.
I hear you. So you just don't want to have to give them the perums, right? They still do that? Do they still get perums?
I have no idea.
I haven't seen it.
I have no idea. Are we going into executive session first?
Aha.
Okay. There she is. All right, all three of you come up here.
Do you need a motion?
Ah, yes, I'll make a motion, go into executive session regarding employment.
I'll, I'll...
We're confusing.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, we're going to have to go the other way.
Oh, yeah. This is a pain. Well, are they coming back in for the open session?
I would hope so.
Coming back in?
Okay. Oh, no, we have the prosecutor first.
Okay.
And I don't have a lot of updates. I think the biggest issue is the sales tax thing. I'm going to have a resolution for you Thursday. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run it by Laura, um...
What did I say?
Laura Stanley, who is the Assistant Attorney General that's assigned to the Tax Commissioner's Office.
Okay.
Just to make sure it passes muster before and not after.
So what happens Thursday?
Yes. Actually, you're going to have it probably, I'll send it to Amy this afternoon.
That piece of paper is yours, it's the ad.
Okay, oh, thank you. Perfect. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll have it to you this afternoon. I'll give it to Amy, so you have it ahead of time.
Okay.
And I will forward it to the, like I said, to the legal counsel.
So we don't really have to go over this?
I didn't think I had any of the other stuff on, but if you want to go through that, we can ask.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't know. It was in the packet, that's all.
Yeah. It was number 10, 10-11 in the packet.
Yeah, so there's nothing else really new with any of the other issues then?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Duracoat issue, I'm still, got another phone call from the attorney who apparently, for Duracoat, who's very busy apparently. And he is going to draft up a easement or some sort of agreement so, for a buck a year so that they can occupy that area with the fence.
They're going to move the pole, right?
They're going to move the pole, well, they're going to pay the invoices so the Revode can have the pole moved and the electric reattached and all of those things that take place. So they're going to do all that. It sounds like the steps are, at the courthouse are coming along.
Yes.
And again, that was the only update I had on this. Is something you specifically want to talk about?
And just for clarification, the sales and use tax does apply to vehicles and motor cars?
Yes, it does. It's 5741.023, code section.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, please.
Thank you very much.
I guess Janet needs to come back.
Denise, you might want to stay because I think Mr. Ames wanted to ask a question.
Okay, we can do that now.
It may be...
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Ames, you're up.
Okay. The question I have relates to the meeting of, of May 5th. It was scheduled to begin at 9:30, but actually began at about 8 o'clock. In that meeting, the sales tax was discussed and there was an agreement made to put it on the ballot. That is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And the Open Meetings Act says that anything that results from a meeting not open to the public is invalid. And it also provides that any person can bring suit for an injunction and have that reversed and they get their legal fees paid and they get $500. Now, there's no limit on the number of people that I can see in there. If you want to look, here's statute here, if you want.
Well, I'm familiar with it, sir. Thank you.
The, there's no limit on there, so you know, we can see that this would be a disaster if there was a flood of these things happening. The other thing would be is they have a two-year period to do that. So you could be out there already collecting the tax, have the tax declared illegal and have to go refund it. And I, you know, I just, it just makes me cringe to think of the trouble that could come from that. So, you know...
Actually, I think what, I don't have the minutes of May 5th in front of me, but if my memory serves, we had a meeting scheduled with the tax committee that we formed, I don't know what we called that committee, but they were meeting in the, the room that we were just in, on the seventh floor. We scheduled those meetings for around 7:30 or 8:30, something like that. Our regular meeting at 9:30 did not start until 9:30. So we were in the hallway, the judges were here for that meeting. Some of them had to leave because they had court. They wanted to share an idea with us. So we sat down, they came in, they shared their idea, we thanked them, we left, they left, we went to the meeting in the corner room. That's what occurred around, I think it was earlier than 8:30 maybe, but whatever time it was.
On the video, the whole part says at about 8:00.
We did go back into that meeting and we did share with them what the judges had asked us to do, and that was to impose the tax. And I thought, I may be wrong, I thought Judge Oswett came back into the room with us for a brief period of time with the committee. The committee had not convened yet because the judges were here and wanted to see us here.
Well, the commissioners actually, if you look at the video, you did convene at 8:00.
I, I'm sorry, sorry, I can't.
If you look at the video, you did actually convene at 8:00 and...
Well, we met with them, we usually met with them at 7:30.
No, but, but you did convene a meeting in here at 8:00 and you, they were here.
Sheriff's Department.
No, we did not, no.
Well, the, the video, video is out there and it's, you know, it's ready available.
We'll have to look at it. We'll look at it and see.
I think they asked that it not be on camera.
Do you have the meeting?
I just have the calendar.
Well, no, I, we hadn't, we had not, I don't think we wanted to...
What time does Amy has this date?
The, the calendar, there's an 8:00 sheriff's meeting.
Here.
Yeah, it said Commissioners Boardroom to discuss overcrowding.
Oh, because the sheriff is with the judges, yes.
The judges.
So we can check the minutes. If it was, if it was scheduled for 8:00 and we actually convened at 8:00, then that was all a public meeting.
Right, right. And that, but it was scheduled at 9:30.
She said it was scheduled at 8:00.
Now, the, the public meeting was scheduled at 9:30.
We'll have to check that.
I, I, I checked for notices out there and there was no notice out there that that being...
I wonder if we have the, we always have a calendar and that calendar should show when it was scheduled to start.
Yeah, it's at 8:00.
At 8:00. And that, that would have been because the judges do have court, you know, but the sheriff was here with the judges, but I don't recall if we convened in past meeting minutes or not. I, I just don't.
We'd have to look back.
The meeting minutes should show that.
Yeah. Do you have the minutes there?
I would only also say that no decisions were actually made that day at all. There was no resolution made.
No.
The idea of the sales tax and the additional revenue...
That's different from the, what the minutes say.
Well, I don't think there is...
There's the minutes.
We'll take a look at them, but I don't think there wasn't a resolution.
Do you have the right date?
They didn't pass a resolution to impose the tax that day.
Do you have the right...
No, they didn't pass a resolution, they put it on the ballot. I mean, they agreed to put it on the ballot.
They talked about it, but there, there was no formal resolution where the three of them took a vote.
We, are you sure about that?
The law says though that if you do the deliberations in a closed meeting, why it doesn't matter, if you make the resolution to be in an open meeting, it's still invalid.
And, and I would respectfully disagree with you.
Well, with the statutes right here.
But I know there's some case law in it, including...
Well, I can't imagine there's case law that...
Well, and that's why I was pointing at it, and I know there's an 11th District Court of a fifth, and, and it's out of here, Phil, that kind of addresses that issue. I'd be glad to pass that case law on to the commissioners who've provided to... But any, but you're right, we, we should look at the meeting minutes and face it.
It's kind of small, can you see that?
I guess I'm only saying there are counter, counter arguments to what you're saying, that's all.
Per the meeting minutes of April the 30th.
But I...
On May 4th.
I mean, for...
Special meeting. It was May 5th you're referring to?
May 5th.
Here are the meeting minutes.
May 5th.
Tuesday. We need to...
Yeah, and, and look, it says 9:30, right? And here says 8:15 and Judge Gillette attending, right there. And the meeting started at 9:30 according to the minutes. It was scheduled for 9:30 and it started early.
Well, again, my two points would be, one, it was not a meeting of the Board of Commissioners. There was a discussion with the judges and number two, there was no resolution, no formal decision by the board.
They can't get together and talk together without it being a meeting. It's a public meeting. They, two of them cannot be together and talk about how many visits with anybody and then not be in a public meeting or an executive session.
Do we have the calendar for that day, the one that was posted?
Yeah.
It could be that this letter had this routine, you know, we use it at each one. And if the public notice...
What day did we meet the executive committee? Not the executive committee, the task force committee. What days did they meet?
Tuesday. Tuesday at 7:30.
I'm sorry, what?
Tuesday. It was always on a Tuesday.
Tuesday at 7:30.
Okay.
It could be this letter had that we used, that they just went ahead and started typing without changing the starting date, time, because we always start at 9:30. But those days when we had those special meetings, we usually came in early because we wanted to do it before the gentleman's...
That was required.
Yeah, here's, here's this calendar that we posted and it says Sheriff's Office, 8:00, Boardroom. Thank you. So it could be an error. This could be an error.
It was election day, I was not here.
It says you were here.
Yeah, I was fine every day. So I wasn't, I, I was on...
You weren't here.
So maybe what they did was, you know, this is a form...
Next part of the template.
I hate to, I hate to put another fine in the appointment, but it may be a separate meeting with the judges. This one was a, a meeting, the sheriff was here to talk about us and the judges, but I believe when the muni court judges were here, Judge Kipman was not with them.
And again, though, but there was no formal resolution, nothing was decided.
So we'll check into it. We appreciate you bringing it to our attention. It's important to us that we follow all the laws and regulations. So you'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
You've got to come in.
I tried to get her mind, she said she's not at all.
It could be that this is a template that they used.
No, that was a meeting. The muni judges came to us separately before one of our task force meetings. They asked to talk to us in here.
That may have been a different day than this one.
Yes, I'm sure it was. You're right.
If I was there that day, because I was...
That was a different day.
It was not the day that the gentleman's referenced.
The thing that he's concerned about is, as you would think he would be, we say 9:30 here, but on the next day, we just say 8:15. So I think we just failed to hear, use the, you know, correct the, the template. And the, the posting that we had for that day, it started at 8:00 with the sheriff, so...
So that's the confusion, just the time.
I think that's probably what happened, but we need to look into it, find out.
I will look at whatever you publish.
And also the Record Courier usually, the Record Courier usually publishes it if we're changing the time.
She sent it to me that you've got an early session or meeting with the, you know, with the sheriff usually. I type them up, whether or not they run.
Yeah, so that's something we can look into as well. Yeah. I can see why he would raise the questions. I can see why he'd raise the questions.
Oh, sure. And I appreciate his comments, of course. And he wouldn't have any idea of the case law that goes with those statutes, so that's why.
Yeah, yeah. But I do think what the error was is that we used the template and we forgot to change the time on the template. But I'm glad that we have the announcement because that starts at 8:00.
That's it. I want to meet Janet.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good day. Call Janet and ask her if she'd come up.
Yeah, sweetie, let's do that.
Thank you so much. I don't, can you get the calendar up right where you are? What, what Wednesday did I go to NEFCO? Was that last Wednesday?
I think it was.
I think it was.
Yeah, sixteenth, sixteenth. Number sixteen. I'm trying to find Janet. I'm going to be late. Okay, okay. Thank you so much. Can you come up right now? Okay, thanks, bye.
Could you print out for us the May 5th calendar? You gave us a copy a minute ago.
Yeah.
Thanks. The, the... No, the, the actual count, this one, the notice that we put on the bulletin board, like this. You brought one out, I, I think, I don't know if Denise took it or someone else has it.
Do you recall what day the, the muni judges came in here? Do you recall what day the muni judges came in here?
What was that meeting, um, what are those meetings called?
It would have been a task force meeting. So it would have been on a Tuesday.
Okay. Do you have a counting? There was one July 28th.
July 28th.
There was one July 14th, and June 30th.
June 30th?
On 7:30. Hello again. Hi. So. July 28th, July 14th.
July 28th.
July 14th.
Okay.
And June 30th.
It would have been one of those dates. And that wouldn't have been, that wouldn't have been recorded at all.
Right. But they're on the calendar.
They were. The judges.
Well, the task force meetings are.
The task force, but not the judges. Oh, open session. For your HR.
Yeah, actually, I just have a couple of issues for personnel or employment. If I'm going to go to executive session for that.
Executive session?
Oh, we do? Okay.
Just for the first.
It says open, oh, so that's not the open session request to post? That's not what we're talking about?
After the executive session.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's right. We didn't do that. Okay.
All right, so this executive session is for hiring?
Got you.
Yes.
Is there a motion for it?
Yes, I make a motion to go into executive session regarding employment.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call, please.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I guess we're.
It'll be quick.
Off again.
It'll be quick.
What are you gonna say?
We can.
All right. I make a motion to come out of executive session.
I second the motion.
We'll call, please.
Vicky?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. Yes, there is. We are changing approval of a shift change for a Treatment Plant Operator 3. And Janet will give you the specific name of the person. We are also approving a transfer at the request of the staff person who was an operator, Treatment Plant Operator 3, who has requested to actually be classified as a Operator 1, so that they can move their location from Streetsboro to Revell.
And they're moving from wastewater to water?
Yes.
Yes.
From wastewater to water. Okay, so will I have that situation?
Yes.
All right, open session.
Yes.
Yes, again, we have a staff person. And the rates. Okay.
Back on?
We are here. The third item is just the request to post the wastewater treatment plant operator 2 at the Streetsboro plant.
Okay, any questions? Okay, to add that to the dromatics, oh, sorry. I got the dromatics to post the Treatment Plant, Wastewater Treatment Plant after the stew. That's awful. Okay, that's it, I think.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
Thank you, Janet.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
So our sales and use tax public meeting is next. It's at 11:30?
It's at 11:30 or, oh, my.
Yeah, so we've got time here.
Yeah, we do.
Would you want to, you would take Jeff Pittman over or?
That would be a good idea.
I know.
Well, that's a staff meeting, though, so that's not.
Don't you have an executive session with him you guys want to?
Oh, we do? I.
How could we have an executive session if it's a staff meeting?
No, no. Wouldn't you guys just talk about Ms. Willis? Maggie Willis.
Oh, oh, oh.
Wouldn't you want to?
Well.
Would that need to be?
Yeah.
That couldn't be in a staff meeting? I don't know. I'm just asking.
I can't do any actual.
Well, all I wanted to do was ask him.
Right, well, we already said the invoice should be paid, so that's, action's done.
Right. Yeah. If we just talked to him in a staff meeting about bringing the information, I wouldn't think we'd need an executive session.
No, we don't. I wouldn't think.
Okay. Do you want my CD to come over anyway for his staff meeting early?
Does he schedule it?
Yeah. For his staff meeting at one. Or we could have Todd come. He's in the building.
Let's do Todd.
And do the staff meeting now?
If you want.
That's fine. That's fine. Yeah, we have, I think, several, several, I knew anyway, several items for Todd to absolutely produce some numbers.
We have to pin it down.
Pardon me?
We have to pin it down sometime.
Yes. We've got the request from adult probation. We've got the request from the prosecutor. We've got.
Todd doesn't need to see you for the, I guess he has.
Staff meeting?
Do you need to see him at all?
Yes.
Are you free to come up?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to see him, to ask him to get us those figures.
What is winery chic attire?
What?
Winery chic attire.
You can close your eyes and imagine.
Okay.
To me, that's a clean T-shirt.
Okay. Well, they're just telling me how to dress for this gala.
Oh.
University Hospital's Portage Medical Center, and it says.
Where are they doing it?
They're doing it at the Thorn Creek Winery and Gardens in Aurora.
They're trying to scrape up $10,000, $10 million so they can take the money.
I don't have it. It's a beautiful place. I mean. Have you never been? We went last week to the Chamber.
Yeah, that was the first time I'd gone. It was last week.
Is that where the butterflies?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I've never been there, though. Oh, is it a winery? I never been at that winery last night. There's a lot of wineries around here.
Yeah, there are.
Was that a country club last night or a wine?
No, it was just a, it was pretty, you know, I don't think.
That's a public, public horse?
Right, I think, yeah.
Barrel runs pretty good down on Innes Street. And then Maze Valley, down in Artville.
I need to check those places out. I don't know when I'd do it, though, most of the time.
Yep.
Yes, yes. Todd, we have met with you and some of the other elected officials. Judge Pittman was here on behalf of adult probation with Kathy Poling and with Hank Gibson. And I'd like to know, and I think we all would, what we might be able to do per their request. And I know they had several layers to that request, but I think by and large, Judge Pittman was trying to stress the fact that.
They're gonna lose grants.
Pardon me?
They're going to lose grants if we don't.
Right, lose grants, but also, I thought, now, maybe I'm a base here. They have not received an increase other than the 1.5, which everyone received. And then falling on the heels of the fact other elected officials has since given an additional anywhere from 1.5 to some other percentage. She would, I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, like some adjustment for the adult probation staff. So I'm wondering if there's anything we could do, at least in the sense of maybe 1.5 additional for them.
We have, and I was gonna bring this Thursday.
Oh, all right.
And you should have it at least tomorrow morning for my agenda.
Oh, okay.
There's, there's a considerable list of requests.
Oh.
They go all the way back to, of course, Vic, the beginning of this year with his amount. Judge Berger, we had Judge Gillette come.
Yes.
The clerk's office bought shelving that they want. So there's, there's a long list of requests. We definitely have the ability to accommodate some of them. Sales tax revenues have come in strong. I will say with the raises, while, while there's a lot of talk about them, the vast majority of county employees still have only received the two raises, the one in 2012 and the one that we just gave.
The 1.5.
So while there is talk, you know, every time somebody gets one, the vast majority of your employees have not. So for that to be the reason why some others should, to me, is a, there's a little bit of disconnection there because by far and away, some have, most have.
You're right to cite that. And I think with adult probation, though, I believe the judge was citing the tremendous increased workload.
Yeah. Now, they're, like, for example, they have the immediate need to pay for, I wrote down urine tests. I don't know if there's a better name for them.
Well, that's what it is. That's what it is.
You know, that, that's the kind of stuff that, to me, we should, we should
Sure.
get accomplished, so they continue operating for today. The increased staff certainly would be nice. I have my recommended budgets. I was waiting. The board, I understand, is going to vote on the sales tax Thursday. I was waiting to see the result of that tax, as to which proposed budget I'd bring forth. So, but a lot of it should be, start clearing up here very quickly.
The prosecutor gave, we gave across the board 1.5.
Mm-hmm.
And then he gave an additional 1.5, so his staff has had three percent.
His is the only department where the entire department got that additional amount.
But didn't the sheriff also give?
Well, he gave his to his eight administrators, but the rest of his staff, which is 100 people or so, only got what was in the contract negotiations, which five of the six at least is 1.5 for this year. So again, there's, it's, there's a lot of talk.
Email I read from the prosecutor was, the sheriff just gave an additional 1.5, so I'm giving 1.5.
Yeah, that was to the administrative staff, like Dennis and that group.
I mean, I don't mean it's fine.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, yeah, it wasn't across the board.
I think it's really important for us to try to be strong when it comes to the annual budget, that we give them a certain amount for each of the categories, personnel, operation maintenance, and capital. And that we stay within the budget, because if we start softening in one department and then the other, then there's a sense of unfairness. So it's important for us to do that, unless there's a real emergency or something that's highly unusual that occurs, in which that would be an exception to the case. We're September, all right, close to October, so we only have a couple months left, three months left in this budget year, so I'm thinking unless, like, the urine tests, I think that is an exception because of the heavy drug use. So we could certainly do that, but any other kinds of requests, I think we should think about putting them in, if we want to do it, put them in the next year's budget instead of trying to adjust this year's budget.
And that's what I do have a lot.
I know Judge Pittman was very concerned about the workload.
And the grants.
That's having, and that everyone has increased, you know, their capacity beyond, or I guess increased their activity beyond their capacity. So it's something that we should at least talk about and consider.
But that'll be on the list. I'll have the whole list for you. I've identified, like, the urine test, to me, is immediate, because you stop operations otherwise. There's a, the courts have some particularly high, when somebody else comes in visiting judge, expenses that are gonna need, gonna need adjusted for. You know, things like that is what we need to do now.
And that'll all be delineated.
Yes, yes, we'll have that.
Didn't you say something about?
Yeah, I don't, Judge Pittman is saying they have.
They have, yeah, that's the.
They may lose some grants.
It's the PSI or the ISP. It's the ISP grant.
And they're paying some salaries with the grant.
The state, the state guidance is 70 cases, and I believe they said they're either at 130 or 140. So their first priority is to get an additional worker in that group. It's a, I call it my ISP worker. I'm not sure what exactly the title is. I have talked with Kathy Poling, and we talked about that being something that happens in the new year's budget, and they seemed comfortable with that.
Okay, so they're not gonna lose any grant money?
Not immediately, yeah, yeah, and I can confirm that again. But when I spoke with her, I was speaking of if we could get that into next year's budget. And that, that was the biggest part, was that position. They had also wanted a couple others, but they said if, I said, well, if we could only get one, what would it be? It was that grant, grant position, yeah.
Okay, so we've kind of quietened the troops right now.
So far, so far, yes. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you then on Thursday.
Yes.
Okay, we have our hearing in about.
Thirty-five minutes?
Thirty-five minutes, yeah. So do we want to just recess for a while?
I think we should maybe, you know, I'm looking at this stuff right now.
I'm sorry, Vicky?
I said, I'm just looking at this. We can recess.
Oh.
I just wanted to.
Is that already? Sure. May as well. Let me keep my, let's flip the mic. Ninety, ninety. And Vicky Klein is our other board member. I'm now going to read the purpose of the hearing. In accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 5739.026, the Portage County Board of Commissioners will hold two public hearings to hear comments on a proposed sales and use tax of a one-quarter of 1% for a five-year period for the purpose of providing additional revenue for the general fund, as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code 5739.026, parentheses, A, parentheses, 3. The Board of Commissioners pledges that the funds collected as a result of this sales and use tax will be expended to support criminal and administrative justice services, including, but not limited to, making payments to any public agency or a private nonprofit agency, the purposes of which include the diversion, adjudication, detention, or rehabilitation of adult or juvenile offenders. This is the final sales and use tax public hearing. I'm going to ask that any of you that want to speak, actually, I'm going to administer an oath, and I would ask if you think you're going to speak or that, that you will speak, that you would agree to, to this oath. I'm going to pose it in this manner. Do you solemnly affirm under the penalties of the law of perjury of the state of Ohio that the testimony you are about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. That was a very resounding idea. The presentation of the proposal. The proposed sales and use tax levy is for a continuing one-quarter of 1% or one penny for every $4 spent.
I think it's not a continuing. It's a five-year.
You're right, and my, unfortunately, my, my sheet here says continuing.
Yeah, if you could just change it.
Well, it's continuing, but it's going to end in five years. No, so we'll make that, we'll make that change. I'm sorry for that. It is estimated this tax will provide about $5 million annually. The funds raised by this tax initiative are critical to all departments being able to provide essential safety services for Portage County residents and employees. The anticipated use of the quarter sales tax increase for the first year includes the following. Increased road patrol, approximately 400,000. This would be actually one staff position, a deputy on the road, 24/7. Keep in mind that the sheriff's department is a 24/7 operation. This would be for the entire county, plus one vehicle. An increased staffing need at the jail, approximately 450,000. Again, the jail is a 24/7 operation, and it's critical that there be additional, they call it corrections officers, that facilitate the caring of the people in the jail itself. This also will be used to remodel the existing building for increased bed space. 1.6 million of that, or 1.2 million for the remodel, and approximately 400,000 for the staffing. The potential would be for the design and construction, most likely of an additional pod, whether a traditional design of a lockdown facility to hold prisoners or an alternative to incarceration. This would be estimated at approximately 1.3 million for the. This would be estimated approximately 1.3 million for the first year. The cost of a new pod would be between $9 to $11 million. And construction of that pod would not be anticipated to begin at least until 2018. We're going to talk now a little bit about several of the points that we have talked about all along, as to why the need for the sales tax. The jail overcrowding. I don't know as though Sheriff Dope is with us.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sheriff. I didn't, I didn't see you over there. I'm sorry. I'm obstructed here by all this technical equipment here. Sheriff Dope, would you care to speak about the overcrowdings, please?
Well, the overcrowding has been an issue for some time. We noticed a spike in the female population in particular about three years ago. And we thought perhaps that was a short-lived trend, and that was not the case. The population of the, particularly with females, has continued to be over the minimum number that we're permitted to have. That has gone on for a period of time. This past year, one morning I came in, there were 60 females in the facility, and we are permitted to have 34. Our total number of inmates is 218. And of course, when we have more females, if the male population is up, that additionally pushes that total number up. One morning I came in to work, we had 72 or 73 female inmates incarcerated there, and we just can't have that going on. It's just a, we're out of staff where the room and the facility are doing that. Any questions about that?
Yes. Do you think this is enough money to cover all that?
You know, I just, we-
We're talking five years. Excuse me. My name's Howard Plute, 7941, Twin Hills Road, Streets Per Ohio.
Thank you. I think we've learned one thing. No matter what the needs are, the money isn't, it isn't money, it's a lack of money.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. The lack of money in this proposal.
You know, I, I wish I could answer that. We know, for instance, the current jail is over 20 years old, actually 20 years old. I said in the last public meeting, there's a lot of tired iron out there.
Right.
And we are remiss in taking care of many of the things that needed to be done out there. One of the things that concerns us gravely is the, the actual doors to the cells. That equipment is not even manufactured anymore. So you're right. As to having enough money, I guess you never have enough, but we're going to be, we're going to be very prudent in the money that's available to us. You know, none of us, none of us want to be in a position to have to impose this, but the circumstances are such that there were two state penitentiaries closed in the state of Ohio. And the edicts become, okay, you take care of it locally, and no money. So we, we know we're besieged with that. This drug epidemic, and it is that, it's gigantic proportions, I hope that there are people in this audience that it does not affect. But I think there are many, many people that it does affect.
Oh, it affects all of us in this room. I thought, we wouldn't be here. That's-
Well, you know, you're right. It does affect all of us, but I'm talking even in your immediate families. I, I wouldn't wish that on anyone. But we've heard people give testimonials that they have exhausted their savings, dipped into their retirements to help combat a drug addiction with a relative, with a son, a daughter, a grandson, a granddaughter, a spouse. It has no boundaries. It consumes people.
Right, I understand all that. But what I'm feeling is, we're in here right now talking about five years. In five years, that population could double by the time we get to where we want to get. What are we going to do?
Oh, yes, yes, Mrs. Jinn.
Your question was, will this be enough? And I think it certainly would be enough to do the reconfiguration of the jail, to provide more space for female inmates. In addition, it's enough to also add a pod. As far as, as in the future, everyone is predicting that this is not going away, that it may get worse.
Oh, it's not going to.
Our hope is that because what we're doing now is not working, we'd like to have the opportunity to change what we're doing so that we can provide additional treatment, drug treatment, counseling. We have a sober house now that's just opened for females to help them once they leave treatment and the jail. So that if we, if, if what we're trying is working, we will reduce those number of people who are addicted. That's the dream, of course. And we don't know whether or not it will work, but we're going to certainly try. And if we're successful, then the population will be reduced. And then, and after five years, we certainly will know. And at that time, the commissioners will make a decision as to whether or not additional money is needed. And if so, they probably put it on the, on the ballot for people. And if it's working, we would be, feel very successful.
Well, I just, I'd like to say eventually, we're trying to get in front of this problem. You know, as you know, we're right in the problem. And they're predicting it will get worse. But hopefully, if we can get in front of the problem with the younger children and to teach, I mean, you know, I have many concerns about this, but my heart really goes out to these children of the parents that are taken away. I mean, I've heard stories of the sheriff's deputies taking people away, and the children are clinging to their legs. And, you know, it's just heartbreaking. Currently, there are 180 children in agency custody, and that's only growing. I mean, it's growing by the week. This is an increase of at least 55 children as compared to this point in time in previous years. Those additional children are in care as a result of substance abuse, particularly heroin addiction. Because some of these children, they do not have family members that can take them. And that's, that's our future, is our children.
You know, also, those children, that's the only mom and dad that they know.
Right.
And I think it's, it's beyond gut-wrenching for our workers that have to go out and take that child from that home. Oftentimes, they don't know the last time that child may have eaten, whether that child was immunized. So this has such, I use the word amoeba-like consequences, but it does. It touches so many different aspects of what county government provides. In this case, job and family services, children's protective services, adult probation. The previous hearing, Judge Pittman was here, and she shared statistics with us and with the audience that was here about the horrendous increase in the number of drug cases coming through the court system. The fact that some of the people that actually show up for arraignment are actually high on drugs. Now, I don't know about you, but if I were going to appear before a judge, I'd want to be as prim and proper at that moment.
That's addiction.
This addiction, yes. The addiction is so overwhelming, it consumes them, that they can't even differentiate. But when that happens, the judges call the adult probation department. They ask that a probation officer, who is certified, come over immediately and test that person, do a drug analysis test. So that all compounds itself in more, more severe caseload. I think the, the average caseload is about 70 people for one adult probation officer. We are now up to 140. So you can, you can see the consequences of that. We have some statistics from the county coroner as to the number of deaths. Would one of you care to, Kathleen or Bishop, would you like to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Heroin deaths dramatically increased between 212, 2012 and 2014. There were 45 heroin deaths since 2010, 38 in the last three years. It started like in 212, there were seven deaths due to heroin overdose. In 2014, there were 18. At this point, we have more deaths due to drug overdose than we do traffic fatalities. And so it's very alarming. And many, and it's not just young people who are experimenting with drugs, it's people like us. The average age is 38.
Fifty-five, I think, isn't it?
No, it ranges from 18 to 50, but the average is about 38 years of age. There are people who have been prescribed pain medication because of an injury or a surgery. And the amount that they have been prescribed is probably too much, and they keep taking it. There's a law that was passed not too long ago, maybe 10 years ago, I've forgotten the date, which keeps track of the kinds of prescriptions that are written. And the, the bill, the law was to prevent pill mills. And so because of that law, and because we're much more aware of the addiction problem, doctors are not prescribing after a certain number of prescriptions for drugs. And the people who by that time become addicted, and so they go to the street drugs. And heroin is cheaper, more available. And so that's what's happening. And so we have people just like us who are addicted, who can't stop that habit. So we need to have intervention. We need to do something different. And that's what we're attempting to do here.
Kathleen mentioned street drugs. And I know that the sheriff has put a tremendous emphasis and effort on taking drugs off the street. As of, I think this was sheriff maybe two, three months ago now, we had a presentation made by the, some of the members of the, of the drug task force. And at that point to date, they have taken 6.5 million dollars of, is that called, street drugs, value off the streets, which is, which is a very, very good thing. We, we really are very concerned about the safety and welfare of the approximately 162,000 people that live in this county. That means increased police protection. Now, several jurisdictions have their own police departments. The bulk of the county, about 52% of it, resides in the townships and relies really solely on the sheriff's department. So we want to put the money and the effort into, again, increased road patrol, more visibility, more enforcement in the neighborhoods. We've had some testimonials given, and I'll share this with you. There's a township trustee, he and his wife walk in the evening, and as many of you probably do. And they were getting ready for their evening walk not too long ago. And the wife, as she was going out to meet him, noticed the same car going up and down the street very slowly. And she said to her husband, "You know, if I didn't know better, I would think that, that, that car might be people looking to maybe case the place, or looking to break an enter." Those are all, I think, sheriff terms on firstmentation. And she had a good sense to write down the license plate number, and they called it in. And indeed, it was a vehicle, I don't know if it had been stolen, but there was a watch on it. And also, the people in it, I think, were less than stellar individuals. So you've got to be so aware. But you do, you have to be so aware and, and pay attention. We had one gentleman tell us that he had put his garage door up, got his alarm clock, went in the back yard, and cut the grass, came back, and the, and the garage had been cleaned out. So this is happening, I don't want to say it's happening every day, but I think it's happening with a good deal of frequency that we don't want to see happen. And so we, we want to combat that. We want to be able to equip the sheriff so he can go out and, and increase staffing and, and take care of this horrific problem for us.
Previously, I gave the statistics for heroin addiction. I neglected to give it for all of the drugs. And so if you would allow, I would like to share that. There's, there's been in the last 10 years, 128 deaths in Portage County due to drug overdose. Beginning in 2012, the number of drug deaths has increased each year. In 2012 was 15, 13, this includes the heroin, in 13, 22, and 14, 27. And so far this year, we've had 15 deaths, so.
I think the sheriff will also tell us, they have enough to do with just managing the jail and housing the prisoners and managing them. A jail is where people go that are convicted of a crime, they committed a crime. It itself cannot be singularly a rehab center. And people are going there, and they're incarcerated, and they are becoming, I don't know what that term is, Sheriff, but they're, they're drying out there, or they're going through withdrawal.
Detox.
Detox, yeah, detox. And unfortunately, some of them have been lost during that process. And that in itself makes the county very vulnerable to lawsuits, even though it wasn't the fault of the, of the jail system or the officers. But when people are so dependent on a drug, and then they withdraw, you know, within, I don't know, hours or days, they go into detox and, and it can, it can kill them. But the jail itself, I shouldn't say is not just equipped, but it shouldn't be, it should not fall upon law enforcement to become counselors or to take a person through detox. That's why we also want to be able to reserve some of these funds for the needed services in the jail. Increase contracting with mental health and recovery board to get the type of help that's needed for these, for these addicts. Or, or even another facility. Our primary concern at the jail is, is to house the prisoners and take care of them. The housing treatment alternatives, I think I touched upon that. The jail renovation and construction costs, I'm sorry, we talked about, and the protection and safety of the county residents, that's really our mantra. That, that's what we want to do with these funds. And if there was a way to have those funds available to us other than imposing this tax, we would gladly do that. There just is not.
I have one question before you go.
Yes.
Who makes that fentanyl?
Who makes the what's?
Who that drug, the fent- what's that?
Fentanyl is the drug.
Fentanyl. How, who makes that?
It's a common drug used in medicine. It's a drug, a common drug used in medicine. I don't know exactly which pharmacy it goes to. He makes it on by the title, if you can. And, but it's, it's a common drug. It's used when you're in the hospital. It's for like anesthesia. It's a painkiller. That's a prescription drug.
Okay. All right. So why don't we go back at these, the guys that were making this stuff, they're the ones that are killing us.
No, they need it for, it's needed for medical treatment.
It's needed. It's the thing, it's legitimate, but how are the, the other guys getting it?
Right. Well, you're talking about the dealers.
Yeah, when they mix it. I, you know, I read the stories, they mix it and stuff. How are these guys getting it?
Well, I think the sheriff probably could, and Judge Oswick is with us, could probably fill you in or give you some statistics on the numbers that come before them that are the ones that sell it and the effort to try to get them off, off the streets. You know, I, I was going to ask some of the other elected officials if they would care to share some information with us. I know Judge Oswick is here, and she's told us some poignant stories of people coming before her or circumstances. I don't know, Judge, if you'd care to talk about the incident on I-76?
Well, I, I have a story for every day of the week and every week of the month. But all I can tell you is that we are doing everything we can, and everything we can is not enough. We have started a sober house. I'm ready to get our mental health court certified as a specialty docket. We've been hard at work on that all summer. Judge Jordy is working on drug court. These are all means to, for us to get some more money, some more funding, to basically kind of wrap our arms around these people. Because mental health is very, you know, it's, it's the cart before the horse, or the horse before the cart. We, we don't know. But, but there are a lot of people who, you know, have mental health problems that are self-medicating with these drugs. And the bottom line is, I'm standing in front of you telling you that, that everything that we can do is not enough. It is, it is such a frightening future for us. I was at a meeting last night, and Mark Frison was there, who is the director of Family and Community Services, who runs all of our shelters. He's the one who's put together the sober house and rude house. And it was interesting to me to be in the audience and see how vehement he was about how terrifying this prospect is for us. So the bottom line is that, that's why I'm saying, whatever we do, whatever we can do is not enough, but we have to do it. And this is, this is, you know, the option that we have to go to because we have done everything else. And part of our problem, and I, I told all of you this a while ago, is that we are a small county. And unfortunately, as a small county, you know, the money kind of trickles down. And we are, we are left in some ways to fend for ourselves, more so than, let's say, Cuyahoga County or Summa County. Those places, for one reason or another, get the big bucks. For example, with mental health, I came to find out, well, why is it that Orianna House has all of these programs in Summa County, and, and, you know, we don't have this? Well, it turns out that years- Well, it turns out that years and years and years ago, the legislature determined a pecking order. And we are way at the bottom of the 88 counties in terms of what we get from the state per capita for mental health. Now, how can that, we'll never get that changed, but we have to live with it and we have to do what we can. So part of the frustration is something we can't do anything about. I mean, Summa County's not going to say, okay, yeah, put us down lower on the list and give more money to Portage County. That isn't going to happen.
They're not going to give up. Why, it's easy to spend people, people's money.
So, I, I mean, I can tell you, ever you want to end this story you want to hear, but what I can tell you for some of you who think that this is about the drug addicts and we're doing this for them, we need to do this for all of you in this room. Because if you aren't concerned, you need to be concerned. Not just, as Mark Frison said last night, because if you're a grandmother or a grandfather or a father or a mother, you will be, you will be affected, your grandchildren will be affected, your children will be affected, not even for that, but for your own personal safety. Because I can tell you that what I am seeing, and I'm in municipal court, so these cases are, these cases are actually, I mean, a drug, you know, use of drugs is a felony, but we get the trickle down. We get possession of, of drug abuse instruments. We get people who are on probation who are using. And, and Muni Court does all the arraignments. So the arraignments never, I'm, I'm never, I mean, I'm, I'm always so shocked that I almost can't be surprised by what I see. But what I'm seeing, and tell me if you think I'm wrong, I'm seeing a trend now, like 18 to 25 or so, people who, I don't know, maybe were marijuana users, and now they're hearing all this stuff about heroin, they're, they're the people who like to experiment. And all of a sudden, we have this whole new population, people that I see in my courtroom for arraignments, who are overdosing in cars. And I can tell you that every single case I have had, because when they appear in front of me, I read the facts, well, what did they get charged with? They get charged with possession of drug abuse instruments or OVI by drugs. And I read it, and every single one of them is a car crash, every one of them. Sometimes it's just themselves going into a ditch or hitting a wall or whatever. But other times, there are other people impacted. And you all know that terrible, terrible death that we had in Kent two years ago, and that was kind of unusual at the time, but now, it, it, I wouldn't consider something like that happening to be unusual anymore because I'm seeing so much of it. So the bottom line is that part of this money is going to also increase your safety, and you need to have your safety increased. Yes, the people who are addicted need treatment, I agree with that. We need more space in the jail. Because what do I do with these people when they're high in my courtroom? I can't send them out on the street. I have to send them to jail. And I did that, I did arraignments for the last two weeks, and the numbers were up, but what am I going to do? So I put them in the jail. And if they have to sleep on the floor, oh, well, so be it, because at least I can go to sleep at night knowing I didn't put those people out on the street, back in a car, overdosing. And what, all I can figure out, I kept saying, why, why is this happening? Why in cars? But what I'm realizing is that these are people, not the addicts who are in their 40s or 50s, who've kind of had their dealers and kind of stay under the radar. These are young kids who don't have money to, to buy the drugs, who don't have the resources, they don't know where to go. They get in their cars, they look for it, they're so desperate, they get it, they shoot up, they leave the needles on the seat, and have an accident. And, am I, I mean, am I wrong about that?
Judge, didn't you find those?
Oh, no, well, here, I'll tell you my, although I have plenty of those. So, in fact, I was, I was telling some people this story yesterday. So I look, every time I have one of these people in my courtroom that's actually a drug overdose or possession of drug abuse instruments that were found in a vehicle, I always have them drug tested. Now, last week, this is before that story, last week I had two people in front of me with, they each had one charge of theft. And I thought the one guy looked familiar. I said, "Do you have anything else?" Long story short, of course, they tell me, "No." I look it up. Well, they have five cases, we're in a 24-hour period. They went to five different Circle K's, and the girl kept the clerk busy in the beer thing or whatever, and he would reach over and grab all of these lottery tickets. Now, I mean, at the end of the day, is that, you know, a terrible thing? Except I know what's going on because I know that they are probably high. And it offends me that they went to every Circle K within 25 miles in 24 hours. So I put a high bond on them because I was just, I was offended because I thought, what are, what are they going to do next? Okay? So as they're walking out, I say to, to the deputy, "I want them drug tested." So they take them upstairs, probation comes over. We have to have a male and female probation officer to come over. And the male says to me, he says, "Well, you know, the guy was honest. He said, 'I'm going to test positive for opiates and marijuana.'" But the girl said, "Oh, you know, there's, there's nothing, you know, I haven't been using..." She lit up every panel. She was positive for methamphetamines, opiates, benzos, and marijuana.
Oh, my gosh.
And she looked, she looked like a pretty decent person. Her hair was done, her clothes were nice. Now what do I do with that woman? I can't send her home. In fact, I decided that she had so many drugs in her system, how could she even make a knowing and voluntary plea? So I said, "You know what? You're staying in jail, even if you make bond, too bad. You're staying in jail overnight, you're coming back in front of, in front of me tomorrow, and you're gonna, we're gonna do this again." I mean, what do I do with these people? And this goes on day after day after day. And I can tell you to almost every single person, and I'll tell you my I-76 story. But, but let me finish her. So she goes up to the jail, she gets, she's in holding, and there's a big plexiglass window right here, I don't know if you know. She takes her handcuffs and does a horrible nasty F-U slur, F-U, you pigs, or whatever, writes it on the plexiglass, this is just last week, with her cuffs. And when she comes in front of me the next day, she has no idea she's even done it. I said to her, "You're getting charged with a felony now." "Oh, what do you mean?" Had no clue.
Oh, my gosh.
Now, this is somebody who, I was disappointed myself that, I, I can usually, not usually, but I can oftentimes pick up whether somebody's high. That's how, I, I couldn't even tell. So that's, that gives you a picture of what just went on in less than a week, in one day. I mean, what I can have, I have a story for you for every day of, that I do arraignments. But the one that Maureen is talking about, this young gal, she was probably 23, pretty redheaded girl, reminded me of one of my kids, comes in front of me, possession of, of drug abuse instruments. I read, needle on the seat, crashes, needle on the seat. Well, I read more. Okay, so here she is, she's on I-76, goes off into some orange barrels that are cordoned off with some barbed wire with stakes, you know, around it, crashes through there, the highway patrol comes upon her. The stake that is holding the barbed wire up has gone right through the front window of her car, and they believe that she is impaled. And her eyes are closed, and the highway patrol says, "We can't touch her, we've got to get the jaws of life here, we don't dare move her." I mean, they, they figured that, that she was dead. So, of course, the EMTs and the fire department come right away, and they go over to the car, and her eyelids flutter. Well, here, this stake didn't impale her, it just stopped right there on her forehead. Unbelievable! So I say to her, "Oh, my God, sit over here, you're getting drug tested." This was 10 days later, just like every other person I test who comes into my courtroom after a crash, after, after being brought back to life by Narcan, every single one of them, including her, tested positive again. And that stuff only stays in your system for three days. So if they're coming to see me a week later, 10 days later, guess what? And here it turns out, she had just been in front of Judge Hoover the day before in Stowe for some other minor drug charge, and he put her on probation. Didn't know any of this. And I called and I said, "Hey, guess where she is coming next." But, I mean, think about this. Think about that you lived through an accident like that, and everybody thought you were dead, and that you had a stake impaled in your head, or that you were brought back to life by Narcan. And I can tell you the two-on-one, as I said before, every one of them comes back in, and they're high again. This is what we're facing. This is what we are facing.
But in lieu of what you're saying, my feeling is, and this is, this is why we're all here, it's, it's the drug epidemic, it's the heroin, meth. If we can find out how many people you're battling, you might have a better chance of battling. We have no idea.
Yeah.
You have no idea.
Well, you don't.
We don't.
It could be, yes.
It could be this guy.
At any rate.
It could be me, it could be you. I don't know. But if you had, if you had everybody registered, and you made it legal, and they shot where they're getting it registered, you would find out how many people.
While you're here, Mark Frison is here, and I'd like him to share some information with you about some of the, some of the positive things going on in the county, sober house and rude house. So Mark, would you please, would you care to come in and just?
Well, sure. I don't know if I can, I may not just knock on the doorway, but, I mean, clearly we have a problem in this community. Clearly, it's not one that's going to go away. And everybody's telling stories, you just heard story after story from the judge. I heard the first one, a new one for me. I'm, I'm in the business of helping treat these people who find themselves addicted. And the reality of the situation is, stories come and stories go. And listen, I'm just like everybody else. You think I want to pay any more in taxes? No. But we have an epidemic of massive proportions in this community. And the story I heard was one I'd never thought about before. I was giving a State of the County address last week. And a lady approached me who runs a very large nursing home and assisted living facility, very prominent one in a very prominent community in Portage County. And she talked about the biggest problem she has in her nursing home and in her assisted living. The biggest problem she has are grandkids, children, whomever, taking the painkillers and opiates off the seniors who are living in these facilities. That's the level that this has gotten to in our community. It's unbelievable. I mean, I, I was floored. That was a new one on me, that the biggest single problem she has in operating an assisted living facility is that she can't keep the drugs that these seniors need rely on, can't keep them stocked, can't do it. They just take them. They take them and they sell them. Or they take them and they, and usually they take them.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If they're taking them, they're using them.
They're using them.
Right, right.
Exactly. So, I mean, it's a, it's a huge, it's a huge problem.
It's, it's uncanny, but this is the God on food. Jim Dogg is my name. I understand the coming election will be voting on whether to legalize marijuana or not. It's kind of ridiculous at the present time where sending people to jail for taking marijuana. The, the population in the jail will decrease greatly if it's legalized, heaven forbid. I'm against it. What this city needs is some recreation or something for the people to go to, like a roller skating rink or something like that, instead of getting into trouble. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. Could, could the sheriff tell the story about the accident where the driver had a needle in his arm while he was driving?
I could probably tell you several like that because of this. We had one incident, there was a traffic crash. And when the officers arrived, they were actually, one was driving and the other was helping someone shoot up. We had an incident in a, we found an individual dead in a restroom at the Giant Eagle store. You know, the, the stories are out there. I, I could sit here and go on for several hours about incidents going on in the county and the, and the drug use. One in particular always sticks in my mind, and we got information on through a drug source, was, you were talking about fentanyl. Well, fentanyl is sometimes used to cut heroin. We had eight overdoses in one night in the city limits of Rovena. Fortunately, nobody died from it. But that drug was out there going around, and the way we, we learned about it was through some confidential informants who were giving us a heads up that this stuff was going around and people were overdosing from it. And we were trying to get some information to go to the source of that. We were not successful with that, to my knowledge, by the way, but, I mean, we had eight overdoses in one evening.
And they all lived.
It's an epidemic.
They all lived, didn't they?
Yeah.
Or all but one?
I, I think all of them.
I mean, would the EMTs got out there and?
We've, we've had the occasion to attend quite, quite a number of rallies. And the last one we did in Kent at the Kent Courthouse, I think one of the most poignant moments was seeing a group of youngsters parade by with placards. And as a matter of fact, I was speaking at the time, and I, I asked everybody to just pause and to watch these kids come by with their placards and, and to applaud them. Now, they're youngsters, and they are our future. And to have them exposed to drugs, and at some point maybe surrender that zeal and enthusiasm they have right now, to carry a banner saying, "No drugs, no more drugs," to cast that off to see, gee, if I would do this, if I would sell that, maybe I could get some money. And, and I'm not saying that, that's, that, that solidifies it, but, but the fact is, that temptation is there. And we need to do a lot more than we're doing about educating our young people with role models or the type of programs that the Drug Task Force has, or programs in the schools. I think unfortunately, we're not just talking about, I don't know what the ages we're throwing out here, 15, 20, and their 30s, we're talking about eight-year-olds, eight-year-olds being exposed to this. And you know yourself, if you have a kid or a grandkid, there's sometimes the peer pressure, well, you know, why don't, why don't you try this? So we've got to be very diligent about that. And the schools themselves can't, they, they can't possibly battle the program totally. So when we talk about this tax, and we haven't really, we really haven't gone there in the sense of maybe deciding, could we, could we use some of that money to increase the efforts within the community, within the school systems, to get, I, I don't know, Sheriff, if it would be, if they're called drug enforcement officers or educators, someone more increased capacity to go out into the schools. Something has to be done. Mrs. Esposito was here too, our county auditor, if she cares to make any comments or?
No, but why don't you tell about the Narcan parties that happened? I mean, bad?
I would, I would like to ask, Ms. Esposito. My name, I would like to ask her a question. You were the person that came up with the, or your office came up with the estimate of how much money the tax would be?
No. No, it did not. We get in 20 million now from 1%. So I think the commissioner's got it, like a quarter would be approximately five.
Well, my question is, is it 1% or 1 and 1/4% now?
Well, the general fund has 1%.
Okay.
So if you take a quarter of 1%, it's approximately 5 million.
Okay, okay, so.
So, no, I didn't get that.
I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of whether it should have been 4 million based on, the current tax is five quarters, and another quarter was making 4 million instead of... But that's, I think the estimate was low high based on, you know, the current tax.
It depends on whether motor vehicles and gasoline engines are in it. Now, I see advertised in the paper that it is not.
They are.
In the 1% we have now, it has motor vehicles and gasoline engines. So one would estimate approximately less than five. Maybe, but our, our sales tax continues to grow.
No, no.
I mean, it was 13 million back in the early 90s, now it's 20 million.
Yeah, yeah.
So see the difference? And we have more retail sales and a lot more than we had before.
I, I'm just, you know, I heard them saying the quarter of the 20, and I think it's actually five quarters versus six quarters.
Right now, we have 1%. Right now, we have 1%. If they add another one, it's 1 and 1/4.
Well, no, I.
So, I don't see what you're getting at.
I think the current tax rate between the two is currently 1 and 1/4%.
No.
Well.
No, PRTA has a quarter.
Oh, okay.
Is that what you're thinking? That does not come to the county.
Okay, but, but, and that's not included in the plan?
No, no.
Okay.
And this will be set up specially and I will show what every penny is spent for.
Oh, yeah.
And if you've been on the internet, on my web, on the webpage, you'll see what we're spending.
I believe you.
The actuals are there.
I was, was curious about, I was concerned that our estimate went too optimistic.
Yeah, you're just putting PRTA in there and PRTA doesn't belong in with ours.
Okay.
We also have, are panelling a committee and we're going to have public representation on that that will meet regularly to somewhat oversee the distribution, I want to say, of the money. The appropriating authority rests with the county commissioners. That's within the Ohio revise code. I'd like to say the buck starts here and it stops here. But that doesn't mean that we can't embrace everyone else in that process. And we're committed to having this money spent in the purpose that we've outlined and we're not going to deviate from that, not, not one of us.
That's what I was going to ask.
No, no.
There's no laws that say that?
It, it does have to go into the general fund. That's why we want all the assurances that it's going to be spent for the purpose.
Of what we're saying it's going to be spent.
That we're saying.
Actually, we're going to set up a special line item where, so that we're going to put it online so that you'll be able to go and look.
Exactly.
Whereby the money will come into that fund and then you'll see how the money is expended in that.
And it's all going to go for?
And it's all for what we've indicated.
And rehab, yeah. We, I don't know if we have any handouts of the, of the composition of the committee as to who will be on that, but in addition to that, we're going to have, not in addition to that, we're going to have some, the public representative. And the meetings will all be open and public so that anyone can attend. And certainly we'd welcome your, your input.
You know, if we would, if you guys would have went to a different, say, if you would have went on the compassion of the voters and worded it a little different, you might have got a lot more support on voting than, a lot of people, when they hear jail, they go, and they see a uniform, they go, I'm telling you, this is out there. It's the majority of the people, not the minority, it's the majority.
Yeah.
If you guys would have reworded it something and worked on the compassion of the people out there with the drug, there's so many people out there, like I'm here because it's touched me.
Sure.
That's why I'm here. It's touched me. I don't want it touching anybody else.
No, understood.
I haven't had anybody die, but I know a lot of folks that are having problems here.
Yeah.
You know, there's a horror out there that I saw when I was in Vietnam and that is, when I was in Vietnam, there were guys that were using heroin. Except sometimes it wasn't heroin, it was strychnine. And they would end up dead. We have, we have a situation where we're trusting an illegal supply chain and our children are out there at risk of this. Should the terrorists ever decide, oh, we're going to start distributing free heroin. There are cases out in California where the guys took this stuff that was heroin and it blew out their pituitary and now they have to take drugs to be able to move their motor muscles. And this is what we're facing.
Sure.
You know, it's much, there's a greater risk out there than any of us can even dream of.
We're not going to fix it in this room either.
No, absolutely not.
We're not going to fix it in this room.
We're also, we're also impassioned and Kathleen just had to refresh my memory here. I should have actually designated this as official public comment. And again, ask you, if you are going to say anything else now, which you're welcome to do, please state your name and your address for the public record. So, anyone else that would like to make any, yes? Why don't we just go, yes, sir, and then, yes, sir?
Okay, Bob Hurd, 3700 Sanford Road, Rootstown. I appreciate what you're saying about the purpose-driven expenditures. This increase would go only for this intended purpose of the jail and rehab and all this. There was that reference made about social security many years ago, that this money was going to be there and politicians rerouting the spending and it's pay-as-you-go. I hope you can implement your desires so this money never gets taken out of the general fund for, eh, a little something over there.
Well, then, Mr. Hurd, they weren't honorable elected officials, if that's what they do.
I'm sure you are, so we won't have to.
Well, no, no, I'm just saying, no, it's.
I mean that.
That's a good question.
No, I, I, sincerely, I do appreciate that because, as I said before, this is a gut-wrenching decision. No, no one wants to do this.
And I believe you sincerely mean that, so I will abide by that.
Thank you.
What were the other alternatives for taking or finding the money instead of just mandating a tax increase? What, what other alternatives did you look at? Anything?
We, we did put on the ballot a property tax a year or so ago and it failed miserably. And we feel that the sales tax is probably a fair way to do this. And we could put it on the ballot for a vote. If we did that, it would be 2018, I think. Do I have the right number before any of the funds would come in from that? In addition, we feel that we have a crisis on our hands and that we'd be irresponsible on our part not to take action.
So, you didn't look at other places within the general fund to find that money? You said there was no money anyplace else?
No, there, no, there was no, there was no excess money or, I like to refer to it sometimes, you'd say you squirrel away money. That just isn't the case.
There were no hard choice?
No, no, it is a hard choice and, you know, please understand too, and I think I said this at the last meeting, when you talk about enforcement or law enforcement, you talk about certainly the sheriff or police jurisdictions, you have to also be cognizant of the fact that they have to then be prosecuted. That, that, that means the prosecutor's office. They have to go before, they have to go to the court system, that means the judges. They have to, and when that happens, they have to buy their rights, they have to be referred to adult probation. That means the adult probation department, which right now is. I'm just saying, which right now is double their, the caseload numbers are from 70, which is about acceptable, I guess, just to, I think, 140. So, you have all these, these other needs, ongoing needs, not to mention things very, you know, essential services like the auditor performs. If any of you, I know you use the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, all the recorder's office, all those things that are under the mandate of the Ohio revise code that we have to fund. Now, certainly, we go through a budgetary process every year and we're very diligent about that and, and we, we sit with the elected officials, we sit with our budget and finance director and try to allocate the money based on, on need. And everyone always has certainly more need than there is revenue. So, yes, we, we've looked at all that and we're not, if there were a pool of money to go to, we would do that.
May I add to that as well, that we have the public defender? All of these that were named, the sheriff, the jail, the prosecutor, the courts, probation, public defender, and every time a young mom is incarcerated who has children, those children are frequently put in childcare and so there's a huge cost for that as well. So, we never, ever have enough revenue to cover all the needs and wants. So, the decision during the budget process is always a very painful one and we've had flat funding in the county over the last five years as even though it's a smaller amount of inflation, still like 1, 1.3% inflationary rate, in addition to all the added costs due to the heroin addiction. So, it's a painful process to do the budget and we would invite anyone who is interested to come in during that period of time when we go through the budget process.
And all that is Mrs. Esposito, so you?
More comments?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, two more.
Yes, sir.
Based on the 1% tax, your office receives $20 million. Therefore, 7% is the current rate in Portage County for sales tax, right? So, that's $140 million, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't come into the county.
I know, I know. 140, I know, it goes a lot of places.
It's a good thing because you spend it all.
And then another 0.25% is something like $5 million. So, the conclusion is here, $145 million in sales tax comes out of our disposable income. That's a big hit.
That's a big hit.
$145 million. You need more and I need more. So, it's a big hit to take another 0.25% mandated.
What I'd like to point out, which is really an important factor, I think, is what we're talking about for this additional tax is one penny on every $4 that you spend. And that does, probably does not include many of the food items that you buy in the grocery store. So, it's, as taxes go and none of us really like to pay taxes, you know, we, we, we don't mind if we know that the money is being well-spent and that we're getting good value for the money that we're spending. But this is a very small amount of money and it's shared, the taxes are shared by everyone that comes into our community to purchase items.
It's one tax among many taxes that we all pay.
That's true.
And it's just one more additional, 5 million, only 5 million more. I find that hard to accept if it's mandated.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anne Casmer, 785, Crappell, Aurora, Ohio. We have looked at this, you know, we could hand that out. We've come up with a proposal for you to consider about this citizens committee and that would be the Portage County Party. If you want to look at this, it's only two and a half pages, very short.
Thank you. Thank you.
But we wanted to be sure that the committee served as an oversight and advisory for this tax and that's explained in the purpose under composition. Just to ensure an unbiased and objective review of the funding requests and an oversight for expenditures and periodic progress reports, which I know that you have said that you wanted to do as well. We want the people on this committee to have no vested interest in the expenditures. So, that's something we'd like you to consider. The Drug Sales Tax Oversight Committee could be composed of one county commissioner, six citizens of Portage County and six members of the business community. On page two, we've kind of outlined how that setup could be divided out. And as far as selection goes, we would like to propose that any, any individual who's interested would nominate themselves for whatever specific slot is open and you as commissioners would appoint the members from the nominations and that would be public information as well. Now, the function and operation is, is suggested that they have a chair and a secretary and these, the chair would work to ensure, with the secretary, to ensure that all the requests for fundings were reviewed and made public and there would be quarterly reviews of expenditures and I think very importantly, the accomplishments in addressing the consequences with the current situation to see what's working and what's working well. If it's not, then things could be changed. So, other than that, on then page three, the requests for funding from the money's generated must be reviewed by the committee before the county commissioners would make that request. And there would be a time period so that they wouldn't take forever to review of 90 days. And in the next paragraph, the public recommendations will be made to the county commissioners who obviously have the final authority in, in making those decisions. So, all committee recommendations and actions are public record and would be posted on the website along with the details concerning the expenditures of funds raised from the sales tax. So, it's just our proposal that you consider this.
We appreciate it.
I think that if people see that those who are helping to review the requests are not involved in where that money's going, it, it might need more transparency for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll certainly read it over and be very diligent. And also, if it's okay with you, we'll share it with, with others too to review.
Yes, I have extra copies of those.
Okay, thank you. We can, we can make some copies, we can. Does anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, you had a.
My name is James. I live on Newton Falls Road, across the country. This gentleman said that he knows that the three of you are honorable, but I'm sure that's very true. Except, we don't know who the next three are, if they're going to be honorable. And that's bad. Also, I hear you sitting there saying that you've looked at every possible, every possible way to save money in this county and frankly, I positively disagree with you. I got a bunch of paperwork from county commissioners that tells me that you've invested $425,000 in a building in Columbiana County and you've received no return on investment since 2012. None. So, we've got $425,000 of these folks' and my money in Columbiana County that services nothing in Portage County, nothing. And then we're sitting here saying, folks, give us more money. That's wrong. It's purely wrong. So, I'm suggesting that if that, that is out there and it was so easy for me to find, what else is there? And I'm sure there's a lot. What happens with these things is, and I worked in industry for a number of years, is the folks that are running departments, they can't see the force because of all the darn trees in their way. So, now, we've got you three folks sitting there who are trying very hard to do a good job and saying, give me more of your money to spend. Well, I disagree with that and I would vote against it. My nephew passed away a couple of years ago from a drug overdose and that's a shame. And I feel terrible for everybody that's involved in that, everybody. But if anybody really thinks that money is going to solve that issue, they're wrong. I'm a recovering alcoholic. I've been, been one for 25 years. Fortunately, I don't drink anymore or else I'd probably be visiting that gentleman over there. But, but incarceration does not solve the issue of the drug overdose. It does not and it will not. Until that person hits bottom, they're not going to get any help. They're going to go to jail, that's it. But the real idea of what I'm saying here now is, what are we going to do about the $425,000 that we're not getting in return on investment for? What are we going to do with that? That's the question.
We have had that for sale. We tried to get the Columbiana County commissioners to buy it. They didn't want to buy it. There's nothing precluding that we would be averse to selling it.
Well, there's, that's another whole discussion that probably isn't so appropriate for this hearing. However, it's very important for people to know that the $425,000 came from the federal government. It was intended for the use of the WIC program in Columbiana County and it was given to the Portage County to run that program because Columbiana County did not do it any longer. So, it's a very long story, but maybe perhaps for another, another meeting other than the public.
I'd like to respond to that because, ma'am, that information is not correct or you did not give me all the information that I asked for from the county commissioners. I totaled up the amount that the paperwork says you've gotten from, from the WIC program and that only comes to $262,000. So, you have not gotten all of that back. And to say federal, we got the money from federal? Well, guess who federal is? Federal is us. The federal government has no money. The sheriff pays his taxes, I pay mine and you pay yours. That's where that money comes from. So, it's still tax money. I don't care where it comes from, it's still tax money. And it's our money. It's not WIC's money. It's the money right here, right now.
It was paid off from the grant.
Yeah.
For allocation.
Right, go ahead, June, if you.
That grant came from the federal as a pass-through for state. It's a well-infant child program.
I understand what you meant.
And many moons ago, when Saboro was here as commissioner, so you went back to that point. So, when the county commissioners in that county dropped it, the county commissioners here picked it up because they had more people. because they had more people to service in that county than we have in this. So the grant has went from eight hundred thousand up to about a million. Now, I must say, I pay all the employees that live in that county, and we pay their bills. And sometimes we have to send maintenance over there. But that building was bought by previous commissioners that are no longer here.
Ma'am, I wasn't shooting at commissioners.
No, I know, I know. I'm just kind of giving you. I just wanted you to have some of the history. Because it's like a, a bag of flour on our back that weighs two thousand pounds now.
And I suggest we get the bag of flour off our back and sell it. And, and as far as the WIC program has been fair, I feel very bad about children. I mean, I'm sorry if I'm coming in front of somebody, and I apologize, please forgive me. But it's not these folks' mind or your responsibility to take care of Columbia County when they won't even take care of theirselves. The reason that program, and it goes back a long ways, but the reason that program died was because they wouldn't hire a medical guy to overlook the program. And I have that in a letter from Nancy Page, who used to run that organization down there.
That's right.
So they did not, they, they decided, we won't take care of these folks if they need taken care of. And then we're going to go step in and do that? Well, I've got a great idea. Let's spend some money on Clay County, Kentucky, or Noma, Alaska, or anywhere else. We can't take care of the world. We can't take care of Portage County with the money we have.
Should be at Congress.
That's true.
Thank you. Because we should be taking care of the world either.
Oh, that's where all our money's going. We're giving it to everybody else. That's where it's all going. The $40,000.
You know, we, we hear you loud and clear, and if we can, I would think, sell it, we, we certainly want to do that.
And the question would be, in my mind, would be, when will it go up for sale?
I'm sorry.
When will it go up for sale?
No, we'd have to, I think, declare it, first of all, excess. We have, as I said, offered it to the Columbia County commissioners who don't want it. Although they're in more of a boom mode than most, any others because of all the drilling that's going on down there. So it's worth asking them again if they'd like to buy it. We declare it, I think, excess property and then probably list it with the realtors and, and see if we can sell it.
Another alternative, have we asked the Columbia County commissioners to pay rent on that building for their people?
They did pay rent on it.
And are they paying rent?
For whatever is housed in there now, there's rent being paid.
The only thing housed in there now is the WIC. The bottom floors, that's everything.
Well, no, the, the WIC was, is paying rent. They had their cooperative extension office in there, and then unfortunately, cooperative extensions suffered the pains of cuts. And I don't think they're, they're there. This is really probably not the appropriate meeting to be discussing this. But it's certainly important to recognize that the purpose of this program, WIC, is to help pregnant mothers and young babies to get off to a good start. It's designed to prevent pre-births that are too soon and damage that can result from that and the additional expense that goes with that. There is the poss, there is also a benefit to the economy of scale. So this is another whole discussion, has nothing really to do directly with this tax. So I would suggest that we allow others who wish to make public comment concerning the, the tax to have the privilege of doing that. We can assure you, though, that we will look into it and the possibility of selling it again. Yes, does anyone, yes? Yes?
Thank you for allowing me this time to add my thoughts. And I appreciate everything all of you are doing. I have, oh, I'm sorry. Twan, Maynard, seven, four, zero, five, Sildon Drive, Kent.
Thank you.
I've been a fifty-two-year resident of Kent and a lifetime Portage County resident. This no WIC quarter percent sales tax increase begs for more consideration. As I read in Sunday's Record Courier endorsement, the newspaper clearly spelled out the problem with only one suggestion. Raise the sales tax in Portage County to seven and a quarter percent. Yes, seven and a quarter percent. That has to be one of the highest in Ohio. Not the highest, but it's got to be up there. Truly, that's like putting up a red flag and saying, do not shop in Portage County. We need to support local merchants, but adding to the sales tax level surely doesn't. The very people who shop locally, retirees, young families with small children, and students, are the very ones who can at least afford an increase. I know, I know, you say it's only a quarter percent. But anything purchased would be taxed at seven and a quarter percent. And yes, it does include those nice dinners in joy of restaurants. Please do think further for a solution. You're asking a ninety-eight percent, and that's probably not accurate, of our county residents who reap no rewards to pay for from four to six percent of county addicts' treatment and rehabilitation. That's pretty grim. And what might be the success rate? You need to do more homework. At best, you say, extend the jail, hire more staff. This quick fix suggestion reeks of delays, delays, and finally, failure. Take more time, think further. Meet with neighboring officials, develop a joint consortium, wrestle through possibilities, while matching a good fit to a rapidly developing problem. Otherwise, going it alone just might be throwing away county funds. Thank you, and again, I appreciate so much the comments that you made. I guess I was, had my head in the sand. I never realized. Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions now, after asking James about that. Is this quarter percent?
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, oh, my name's Brian Ames.
Thank you.
Randolph Township.
Thank you.
Does this quarter percent match up the amount you can have? Does that, does that take it from zero to a quarter, or from a quarter to a half? Because is that quarter percent, quarter?
Zero to a quarter under this particular provision we're using.
Zero to a quarter, so there would, there would still be a possibility of another quarter.
Correct.
Okay. Next thing, I was, I heard mention of another resolution. Is there, is the current resolution going to be done?
We would have to pass a resolution, oppose it.
No, I mean, is there a new resolution, or it's coming, or?
Yes. Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Then you would have to have two new meetings?
No, that's what we're doing now. This is the second.
Yeah, but if it's a new meeting, then that resolution would not have been in the meeting.
You do the resolution after you have the public meetings.
Okay.
And we've already had one, and this would be number two.
Okay, so, so the, what I heard was not a new resolution, it was the...
It would be a new resolution.
It would be a, a new resolution Thursday.
Then I think you have to have the two meetings before you adopt it.
Well, that's what, that's what we've done. We had a meeting last week, and then this is the second.
Yeah, but this is the new one, so it restarts it.
According to our legal counsel, you have the public meetings to hear from the public before you do the resolution.
Before you have adopted a resolution.
That's right.
But before, before you present a resolution, I mean, the resolution that was published is not the resolution that you, you're going to adopt.
We had to rescind that, though.
The, the law says that you have the public hearings first, listen to the public, and then you propose a resolution and take action concerning that resolution.
Well, it says, in the law, it says that they have to resent the resolution. So the order has to be, the resolution has to exist before it comes to meetings.
No. The meetings come before the resolution. The two meetings come before. Did you advertise the section of the code that you're doing this under?
Yes.
So that's why you had to resent the other ones, because the code was incorrect?
And we did rescind it.
And you, in the advertisement, you did the right code?
Yes.
Right, right.
Yes.
I have another question. Howard Flute, Streetsboro. So in lieu of everything, we're going to get it passed, possibly. Now, a few years ago, we had a jail that was, we had to rebuild because it didn't have, it wasn't, the state said it wasn't proper. We had to have a bigger jail. Is that going to happen now? Are we going to be in a crosshairs of laws with the state of Ohio if we don't have a, produce a bigger jail?
Well, the jail was built because of the federal laws.
Right, federal laws. That's what, that's what I was thinking.
And the court steps in and starts dictating what to do, we wouldn't be having the meeting.
Right, right.
They, they would tell you.
They would tell us what to do. So if we don't do something...
That's part of what we're trying to avoid.
And they're going to come in and tell you anyway. So we're in a crosshairs of either we do, or we don't, or we're told to do.
Well, we're taking a chance on that. If, if there's not money there to add on to the facility, that's certainly a large concern to myself. One of my concerns. One morning I went in there, there were seventy-three female inmates. We were literally stepping over bodies in the daydream back there. That's the sort of thing that stimulates people to file those sort of suits. And once that's filed and the court steps in, they, they basically tell you what you're going to do.
So we're trying to avoid that situation on our own again. Because what does that do? That gives us a black mark if the federal government comes in?
Well, no, what it does is just say, here's the checkbook. They say, they don't say, here, they say, give me the checkbook. And then all the things that we've talked about could be slashed.
They can do whatever they want. They have to tell you within the law.
Federal judge can do pretty much whatever they want to do.
And the federal judge said to Portage County, and I was commissioner that year, you build it, or I will.
I've been in Portage County all my life, I know what's going on and not, so I, I...
And that was fun. Sam Bell was the federal judge. I'll never forget it.
I don't know who the judge was, but I remember they said, you guys got to pull it out of jail.
You know, we'd rather be in compliance and not have that happen.
Because it makes us look terrible.
And do it the proper way.
Well, not only that, but then we have no control over the money. We just say...
They say, this is what you do for it, and this, so...
But we did have control of the money because we build it.
Right.
He didn't have to say, you will do this, this, and this. He got mad, though, when I said I didn't have air conditioning and the prisoners don't need it, as far as I'm concerned.
So what's the timeframe?
And we had to do that.
What's the timeframe between now and then, when they have the opportunity to come in and tell you? Do we have a timeframe? No? So they can come in anytime, they can be here tomorrow, huh?
I think we would lay out a plan, certainly, and present it. You presented yesterday.
We didn't have anything going. They could come in tomorrow and say, hey, this is what, you're going to spend this on this and this on this.
Yeah, we would hope that wouldn't happen.
There we go again, it's our government. Well, I mean, I mean, even, even our local government is battling the fence. I mean, come on.
Does anyone else have any? Yes, sir.
Sam Huth, Temperon, Nevada. You're right about one thing, this problem's not going to go away. It's like somebody's smoking and has COPD. You gotta have to want to quit to make it go away. That's the only way it's going to happen. And I don't care if you build jails. The thing of jail and staying at home, you do the same thing, you just lose your freedom. That's it. I don't see them out there picking up trash. I see the men picking up trash, I don't see the women. They are. I mean, be a little more strict on them when they're in the jail. Take, give them drug tests if they're on food stamps. No offense, but that's probably the biggest majority that end up in there.
And here we go again, it's education, and now we're saying poverty brings in drugs.
Understood.
So now you're stereotyping folks, but it's true. So perception is reality. So what you're perceiving is real. And that's what we're all doing right here, is we're perceiving something that is definitely real, and we can't solve in one room, but we're trying to figure out how we could postpone that in the meantime, until somebody comes up with a fix. That's all we're all doing.
You know, I was in the workforce back a while back, and they'd give us drug tests all the time, that random. And I'm telling you, if you got, if you was on drugs, you was out there.
Sure.
So if they're on drugs, take away their benefits. Whatever.
I say give them one state, put them all in one state. They can do whatever.
The issue with what you're saying is, when you do that, they're going to go out and steal something to support that.
Well, if you make a law that says...
Well, they're going to, they're going to do that even if you don't, because they gotta want to quit being on drugs. That's the only way it's going to end. You can lock them up for two years, they'll come out and do the same thing. That happens all the time, you know what?
And, you know, not, not to whatever, pass that off, but if the legislators pass something that say you have to test them, then, then it would fall to us to implement having to test them. Right now, that's not a requirement. Yes, sir, you had a question.
Yeah, Carl Crawford, thirty-seven, seventy-one, Middlebury, Nevada. I'm the person who, on the back of this big handout, I'm the person who did that presentation. In August, I had the ability to meet with the sheriff and the sheriff's at the jail, spend about four hours at the jail. I agree with the need, and I, I unfortunately can't come up with a better way to fund it other than this sales tax. However, the two things that I see still missing here, and, and maybe I haven't made it clear, is more of a budget, you know, a forecast plan. Okay, because something that shows five million a year coming in and exactly what it's going to go out for. Because if I look at the top of page two, and I do my rough farmer's math over here, it's about seventeen or eighteen. Somewhere in that range. So that, that adds up to it. So to me, I mean, I understand, we need a plan, we need to fund the plan, but we need to be responsible and diligent in that spending. So that's what I'm asking for, is a simple business plan, operating plan for how the money's going to be spent.
Carl, you were taking, you were taking the total and then just multiplying it times five, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, three to the seven.
Other than the one times of the jail.
Eight to the seven, right.
So I think that's what's going to be important, because you set the plan, you evaluate monthly, quarterly, or whatever the reviews are going to be with committees, and then you make adjustments to the need. Okay? So that's, that's my simplistic point of view.
So you're, you're right, and...
And then the other thing to, before we get off, is at least here, we're saying jail not to begin construction till 2018. And I guess I'm questioning, why would we be waiting till 2018 to begin the construction?
We're actually going to move forward with the reconfiguration of the current jail immediately. I mean, we need to do that right away.
I agree with that.
You know, I don't think you, that we have the opportunity to, thank you publicly, Carl, for...
And the other quick thing is, I think there needs to be one person responsible for, you know, whether it be on this committee, but one individual is going to be your answer for this. Because otherwise, I can see this playing out, especially if we don't segregate the spending, segregate the money track it, where it's going to be a lot of pointing at one another and so forth.
Yes.
And make what decision.
Yeah, I understand.
No, we, we want accountability, we want reporting. You're right, any successful, any business has a business plan. And I think certainly we can do that.
Okay.
We assemble the people and, you know, lay it out sequentially. I think we're just trying to, you know, have the public hearings, convey all the information we can, and then go to the next step. And we're, and we will do that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I think this oversight committee could probably be very beneficial and helpful.
Yes, it already has been. We've got sixteen now.
Admittedly, some of the things that I've written in my statement here have been touched upon.
Ames, please.
Oh, I apologize, thanks. Barbara Tittle, nine oh nine, Middlebury, Kent. I realize that the tax and for more jail cells and more sheriffs and more expenditures is primarily stock cap program, and it's necessary. But it must be noted that spending more money to do the same things, which, as Ms. Chandler noted, have not been working, will not really help or reduce the current drug abuse epidemic. Through my ten years of medical education at university hospitals, I learned about the multiple ways our doctors in Ohio are learning to avoid prescribing, over-prescribing class one drugs to patients, because that was, that's been a problem for a long time. Also, the doctors, over the past several years, in conjunction with the State Pharmaceutical Board, and I think Ms. Frederick mentioned that, there is now a program which tracks how, what prescriptions people get because of another big problem for a long time, was people going to six different doctors to get the same prescription. And that has been cut down, to some extent, with the Pharmaceutical Board program. But, you know, there are so many problems. Also, through my five years of taking continuing legal education classes to the State Bar Association, including required substance abuse and drug addiction information, I learned... that the real reason that drug addiction is so hard for people to overcome is that when you start taking drugs, it sets off a specific physical place in your brain.
Yes.
And that's permanent. I mean, those drugs, as such as opiates, permanently change the brain. These are changes which are not just easily overcome by putting people in jail, as many people have said, or rehab, or ordering people to go to narcotics and non-emissions. Everyone knows the twelve step program will tell you every day of the week. People will not quit unless they really want to. And that is, that's a hard thing to get to, because once you get that, that little switch in your brain that says, oh, feed me some more opiates, and I feel so much better, that's all they wanna do. I mean, the problem is that that just doesn't watch you enough, and they don't wanna quit. They just want more drugs.
They're just...
Exactly. And the answer is more in the line of prevention, and I think a lot of people have mentioned that, too. Ms. Frederick specifically noted that. It does, and that does not mean just more DARE officers going out to the elementary schools, because DARE's been around for twenty years. And in those last twenty years, the drug abuse problem has only increased exponentially. And as one of you noted, a lot more, I think it was one Judge Oswick, a lot of the offenders now between eighteen and twenty-five, kids who were exposed to those DARE programs, and said, to heck with that. They get drunk at their parents' house, and then the next thing, you know, somebody say, well, hey, you want even better? Hi, how about some of my cousin's ADD drugs? How about some of my mother's fentanyl? How about something I stole from the nursing home while I wanted to visit my grandmother? And someone had mentioned, well, marijuana is a gateway drug. So is alcohol. And we somehow need to address, and I don't know how. I'm not saying I have the magic case. I wish you did.
I don't.
But we need to work more on prevention. I certainly hope that the Uwich Hospital person you proposed beyond this community panel will be a, either a neurologist or someone skilled in addiction systems, and not just a token physician, short, just a short bit more. Prevention can also include intensive therapy for first timers before they get experience, like Judge, who was at the last meeting, said, you know, she had this young woman come in, she said, well, I know you can't send me a Neocat because it's flawed, so, yes, why call her bluff and say they're in a prison. Why don't they just get more education on how to get around the law? But the point is, if it's a first timer, a youngster, you know, somewhere under twenty-five when their brain, before their brain is really fully developed, there may be some hope for first timers. And I really think that we need to look to various drug courts around the country, which have had some successes, and which Judge Oswick mentioned that, again, that they are looking into that. So, that's an important element for me. And regressive European countries handle these problems. They don't have, you know, fourteen, they don't have seventy-three people, women laying on the jail floor because they're all been stealing from Walmart and exposing their children to methamphetamine and making drugs in the back of the car, and stuff like that. It's just, I feel, you know, I hate to pay the tax, too, and I avoid it with, you know, with the pledge. But, you know, I think it's worth the money if it can be spent on...
Making a difference.
Making a difference, and not just repeating the same failed things that we've been doing forever. Hopefully, some of these things that the judges are doing, things that people, other people are looking at, can find a better way than what we've been doing for the last millennium.
Yes.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone...
I got one more comment. I say, if we legalize everything, you know how many people you got for your enemy, and you can go out and battle. If you don't know how many people are out there using or doing the drug, that's where he has the problem. Five hundred cars. Holy Christ. I mean, that's ridiculous. If I want somebody to overdose, I want them sitting in a clinic somewhere where I know what they got. I know, because they're gonna come, because they're addicted. Don't march in like Lennies. They're addicted. They'll get the finest stuff, they know what they're getting, then you start easing off of it. Then you pull one out that says, hey, you wanna get rehab? Go get rehab. Right now, you're not, it's not gonna work. Anything we say right now, like they said, quick fix. You gotta quick fix it, you gotta put the finger in the dam, so the whole thing don't burst, and that's what we're trying to do. I wish we could, in this room, cure everybody, but we can't.
Sure.
And we need other help, like federal government. You know, they're the worst enemy, they're our worst enemy. I'm gonna tell you right now, federal government. Anybody who taxes social security, they're my enemy. And that's what we let these folks do. It's gone. Yeah, it's gone. Where'd you get left? So, I'm just saying, if you legalize it all, you gotta control, you know, how many people are out there shooting up or doing whatever. They're coming to your clinic, and one or two are gonna say, I oughta get off of this stuff. So, you can help them. Right now, you can't help anybody. You don't know what's out there and who's doing what.
No, understood, thank you.
So, we're done.
We'd really like to conclude this, only because we do have a one o'clock appointment coming in. So, yes, sir.
Robert, rest. Yes, sir.
And I understand by a former question here, that there is a point two-five percent increase later down the road, and it's possible under present law?
Yes. Right, Todd?
It's allowable.
It's allowable.
We have no plans to implement it. But you could, this commission could mandate another point two-five.
This commission will not. This commission will not.
But you could.
We could. This commission will not.
But you could. The Congress has...
Because you have one commissioner who will not vote to do that.
You have three.
We had one that didn't vote for the mandate last time, right?
Understood. Waiting everything, yes.
It's going to happen. It will happen. It'll come. I believe.
I hope not, Mr. Herbert.
I hope so, too.
All right, this concludes the public hearing. I wanna thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
And all your comments and your thoughts, and it all came, I know, from your hearts, and we do appreciate that, we really do. Thank you, and we will be very diligent about finalizing everything.
And I would like to add that I'm very impressed with the turnout. I thank you very much for coming.
And your awareness and your, and your knowledge and your comments.
We should have thousands of people here.
And your openness. Thank you. Thank you.
I know you need a break. Well, you know what we could do? We've already met with DBF, and we've said to two of us, that's fine. That's fine. Good. Jeff, it's at two o'clock. Is he here?
We tried to intercept you.
Oh, yes, we need to do that. No, I, I agree, it's just that, I just would like to...
Just take a break now. Why don't we take a half hour break?
I guess we can keep starting? Yes.
The presentations are hard.
Thank you.
I will apologize in advance from the standpoint that we, I know you like to get these in in advance, and we had not been able to get the wording to a point. We were, it was our fault, being, you know, we put down what we thought we would say, and then, you know, Susan was kind enough to tell us, and it's not quite what I, oh, yeah, she agreed.
I just tried to simplify as best possible for everybody to be able to understand.
The more we simplify, the more complicated it seemed to get. So, I think we've gotta brought it back to where I think we can just talk it through. You are, again, thank you for having us today. We are representatives of Willis of Ohio, and we have had the privilege of working with Portage County for inaccessible ten years, probably more than like fifteen.
You must be good, though.
Well, I don't know. We'll see if you think about this, but...
They are, they are.
But it's been a process for us where we've worked with you every three years, the account goes out to bid, which is kinda set by your procedures. So, we are in the second year of a three-year cycle. A year from now, we will be out to bid again. But this is, you've been with Medical Mutual for a long time, and Medical Mutual has prevailed on these competitive bidding processes. So, this represents today Medical Mutual's renewal for 2016, focusing on their administrative costs and their stop-loss costs for one part of it, but then also what the conventional rates would be for your PPO and HMO plans going to 2016, and then modeling from there what employee cost-sharing options you might have. So, it's gonna look like a lot of pages, but I think we're gonna keep it to where we have your current plan designs that you have the option of renewing, and we have a second option for you to consider where we raise the out-of-pocket maximums slightly, as most plans are doing anymore in an effort to bring it down. In a nutshell, your current plan designs have a forecasted budget increase of eight point eight percent.
Say that again, please.
It'll be eight point eight percent.
And that is an inflationary increase, is what I'm...
Could you say the whole sentence?
Sure. The current plan benefits has a projected budget increase, if we don't change anything, of about eight point eight percent, which is, it's about inflation, unfortunately, with healthcare.
Our claims are exactly about $200,000 less the same time this year as it was last year, so that is basically an inflationary cost increase due to a lot of factors.
The last time we did this, we looked at SEP code, it came in a very close second. Is this the same process now that we're doing, or...
You know, that...
That will be next year.
That would be next year.
That would be next year, right.
Okay, this is just the plan, because we do have a three-year plan.
Right, right.
Okay, so you're talking about the same plan we have with Medical Mutual, and what will happen to it next year?
Correct. And then we have a second plan where we tweak the out-of-pocket maximums up slightly, so it brings that eight point eight down to seven point six.
Oh, okay.
So, from there, we'll have two approaches to design, and then employee cost-share options as well, so that's kind of the basis of what we'll have. So, if we can go into the report itself.
I will go to the page.
On page two, we wanted to just address the fixed costs that you paid to Medical Mutual for the administration and the stop-loss risk transfer. The administrative fees as a result of the last marketing we did in the summer of thirteen was that your administrative fees would stay flat each year. So, there is no change in that for 2016. The stop-loss is a combination of two pieces. You have a stop-loss level per claimant of $175,000. So, if any one person were to have claims that hit that level, Medical Mutual funds above that. Then you have an aggregate or umbrella stop-loss that's calculated as 125% of your expected paid claim. So, this is kind of that sleep insurance that you should never hit, because if you're going 25% over what we expect your claims to be, you're having a worse-than-worse year. It has to be a pretty catastrophic year.
That ISL is individual stop-loss.
Individual stop-loss, correct.
Would you tell me the language you used again about the umbrella or...
Aggregate?
Aggregate.
Correct.
And that is based upon 125% of what?
Your expected medical, drug, vision, hearing claims.
And where, where is that number?
That number would be, well, we'll get to that one in just a second.
Okay.
Okay. These are the hard dollar numbers. So, the one that you, we struggle with in our industry always is the stop-loss, because that's the one that is not tracked directly to your experience, meaning what you paid in versus what you paid out. The reason being is that these are infrequent occurrences, hopefully, but when they do occur, you could have a million-dollar claimant.
They're the major illnesses that nobody knows they're gonna get, obviously, contract, and then we have to pay for it.
Hopefully, you never have any, but if you do have any, be one.
Right.
Yes.
And if you recall, several years ago, we had a, we had one to...
We did. A couple of years ago, we had a child.
Really hot.
Yeah, that was astronomical.
And that's, and that brings back the notion as to why this is not a comparison of what they paid out versus what you paid in, because you'd still be paying that one back, essentially. But it's very common in our industry for those specific stop-loss, I should say, the individual stop-loss levels to be going up fifteen to twenty percent. And this particular scenario, they came through with an initial request of 631,000 here in the middle, and that's the combination of the individual and the aggregate stop-loss. We pushed back on it from the standpoint that things had improved for you, and we were able to get them to agree to come down to 610,000. Not a lot of magic in it. We requested, we, we have a stop-loss panel at Willis that we use as kind of a, we wanna, you know, we wanna take you to our stop-loss panel as a result of this increase. Willis has created this from the standpoint of five stop-loss carriers that have agreed to favorable terms and pricing. We're not big fans of carving out stop-loss to an outside vendor, because what ends up happening if you do do that is if you do have that large claim, you've essentially gotta file a claim with this outside vendor, and that delays your reimbursement and so on. But as...
Where does it come from?
It's with Medical Mutual.
Medical Mutual. But as a leverage tool and a renewal, it comes in real handy. So, that helped us get that 631 down to 610. So, these are the fixed cost pieces of your, of your program. There are, if you go down to the bullets at the bottom, you'll continue to have a $20,000 wellness budget as part of that last three-year arrangement. Last year, we had a single claimant that had a $275,000 laser. And that is where a laser, that's right, that's one individual claimant on your...
They singled them out, so to speak, because they knew what it cost them the year before, they projected what it was gonna cost the next year, and that's why they singled that person out and charged this additional amount.
The word laser is a colloquialism, right? Laser means that we've singled out a particular...
A particular person, right. And if you recall last year, when we said, well, what would happen if we, if we just put that person down to the 175 like everybody else?
They paid the additional.
Miraculously, that difference was $100,000 in premium.
So, we singled out that person, and we had a different cutoff for that person.
Right. And we had some, some feeling that that person might not hit that...
Did they ever go over it?
No.
No.
So, this year, there are no lasers going into 16, which is, which is good news. Because when you think about group insurance, it kinda defeats the purpose if you're gonna pick one person out, treat them differently. But it is something that happens in this industry, and again, back to our, our panel, what, one of the good things about our panel is that they have, to be a member, you can't laser anybody. And that, again, is part of that leverage we use often, because we'd prefer to have your stop-loss carrier be with your claim payer, because then you get immediate reimbursement.
Isn't it in our best interest to have a laser, because that way we can keep the rest of the insurance more reasonable?
I'm sorry, say again?
Isn't it to our benefit to have a laser, because by having that, we can keep the rest of the...
It would have to be a numerical advantage to you. So in other words, if you had that, let's say we had a person this year that was going to hit $275,000, and if we said, "Okay, that means you, the county, are gonna pay from the $175,000 up to the $275,000, so you'll be out $100,000." Will you be saving premium enough to offset that or not? That's what it would come down to. And that's why last year, we said, "Well, what happens if we pull them back in with everybody else, and it would be another $100,000?"
So it was basically gonna be the same either way.
Yeah, yeah. And based on some-
You'd say it would be the same?
It would've been the same either way. We chose to take the risk, because we were gonna pay either way, so we just took the-
Ooh, one second, if you don't mind. I think this, I should do the next point. Yes, thank you. Great timing, because I wanted to make sure with Medical Mutual. On the third bullet, you continue to have a discount guarantee with Medical Mutual, where they will have, they target 54% of your medical claims in-network. I should say, the discount will be 54% of your in-network medical claims. And they will pay you a penalty if you dip below 50.
Well, they did, they did this a year before us. They actually gave us a check for about $9,000 for a few claims that didn't come in as planned.
2014, what they just confirmed for me was that they were at 57. So there was nothing owed for '14. So, but that will remain in place for you going into '16 as well. So this'll be the third year of that three-year settlement. Page three, you also have rebates paid to the county for brand-name prescription drugs. And this is kind of a misnomer, because what you'd like to have is people using generic drugs, which you have a fairly high percentage of. But when they do use brand name, there are rebates available from the manufacturer, and we should get some money back. So your rebates will continue at $25,42 for the retail fills, and $76,23 for the mail. So annualizing what we saw for year-to-date scripts here in the middle of the page, and using those rebates, we would estimate that you'll have $114,000 of rebates that'll get paid back to the county on your invoices every month. Stop-loss alternatives on page four, we're still talking about the risk element of your plan. These would be the individual stop-loss, if you will. It's just we've got a variety of names called the specific stop-loss, individual stop-loss. But this is the coverage for each individual on the plan of $175,000. What we tried to show you here were what are the alternatives if you did raise this across the board for everybody? So you'll see where there's $175,000 here, and there's a $610,000 number. If you raise that to $200,000, you would save $42,000, or be able to break even at 1.7 people going from 175 to 200, which we don't feel is a very good risk. We'd like to see it more like three. So if three people went from 175 to 200, you would, we would need to see savings of at least $75,000. The third option, though, is $225,000, which I think is high. And I'm a little uneasy recommending that. I'm not really recommending it. But it would save $140,000 of hard dollars if you took on that extra $50,000 of risk. And you would be able to absorb almost three. But that's a pretty lofty level that I'm not real sure I'm comfortable recommending you go to. I'm kind of inclined to say stay at your $175,000 level. But that's a risk transfer. How many did we have reached that in the last five years? Uh, we had that. Hold on. We handed in an initial earlier report, which I don't have copy of. I'll have to get that for you. Yeah. And I'll send that back to you, how many you did have. We had that in an earlier version of that version.
Do you remember if it was on the first one?
Not my turn.
No, that's okay. You remember still?
I'm thinking it was under the break even. Then, because the first one, the $175, isn't that what you recommended?
Yeah, I was looking at staying there.
I think that's based on what the county report created.
I can, I can look that up again. We had it, and I don't have it with me. Let's just send this one. All kinds of great data from last year, but none, that's not one of them. I will get that for you, Rob. That's fair question, yes. And that's also a decision you really don't have to make until the end of the year, because this isn't something your employees are ever gonna know about or care about.
Right, it's just reflected on-
It's your risk transfer.
I believe last year, we did make that decision.
Are we on?
Everybody's gonna know.
Well, but it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect anybody.
It's an insurance element that doesn't affect their ID cards or their benefits.
It doesn't affect anybody's regular spending.
Yeah.
I misunderstood.
All right, page five, I wanted to spend a second on, because this demonstrates to you how we came up with this trend in inflationary increase. We have forecasted your paid claims for 2016 based on a blend of the prior two 12-month periods. So we have 9-1 of '14 through 8-31 of '15, and also 9-1 of '13 through 8-31 of '14. And what we've done is we've taken those particular years, divided them by the employee, the average employee's setback two months, which we do because of lag between a data, claim is incurred and a date it's paid. People that have claims that are incurred, say in October, typically have them paid in December. So there's a lag of a couple of months. So we ended up with two different claim costs per employee per year, and we blend those in a ratio of three to one, the most current to the prior. And this is just an ability to recognize that you've got different claims in different years. And you don't wanna put too much stock in a bad year or a good year, and blend it out a little bit. So in category B is where we're using the inflationary number with as an annual trend of 7%. But it's kind of like an interest calculation where you've got claims through August, and you're trying to project their value through the midpoint of 2016. So there's 16 months of trend there, where you go from the midpoint of the claim period to the midpoint of the renewal period. So that's, it takes the 7% up to the nine. So you get a trended claim cost per employee. We've also included an adjustment under line D for your incurred but unreported claim reserve, which is currently for the county, just a little under $4 million, which is, we'll see in a minute, I think is sufficient. So you end up with an incurred number under line E of just $11,697. If current employees are 799. So you project out your incurred claims of $9,345,000. Then we build in the administration under line H, the stop-loss costs under line I, and we end up with a projected accrual or budget number of $10,300,000. Then we need to add in the healthcare reform costs, which is the reinsurance fee, which has gone down thankfully in 2016. That will be $27,000 per member. And then the PCORI fee, which is the patient-centered outcome reinsurance, otherwise known as comparative research fee. This is where money is being paid by employers to fund research on better courses of care, more efficient courses of care. You, as an employer, get to pay that bill. So the PCORI and the reinsurance fees we project for 2016 are $49,000, so that we have a total accrual projected of about $10,368,000. And your current accrual, if you go over to the right, usually what we recognize is your current budget rates, if you will, of nine and a half million, and that gets us to that 8.8% bump to your accrual. So we're targeting claims of about 9.4%. So a lag for a claim and curl is generally no worse than two months. So if you figure we got nine, oh my god, look at that. If our claim's going to be, say, 9.4, that means that for two months, you'd need about $1,006,000, $1,005,000 to $1,006,000, very ballpark incurred but not reported claim reserve.
You know, backup, on that K, didn't you say that went down to $27,000, or did I miss something here?
Yeah, $27,000 for the reinsurance, and then $2.12 for the PCORI.
Oh, okay, so that's 29.12 is right.
The sum of the two, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So what do we have now in unreported claim reserve?
So your reserve at the moment is just under $4 million, so $3,700,000.
And this would go down to 1.5?
Well, at the bottom, bottom half of it, yeah. And this is something that self-funded employers like yourself will look at, because that can swing up or down, that balance. So we're not suggesting that we use it to subsidize at all, but-
That's the minimum we have to have, is 1.5.
Yeah, we would need an actuary to tell you if that, my thumbnail number is right or not. And you have had Medical Mutual do that for you.
So if we have $4 million now, this number, 1.5, is what we must have. But if we have $4 million, we're going to have more than 1.5.
You would, but you could also lose ground on that very quickly. And there are counties that have had that problem.
We don't want that to happen.
I'm not sure where you are on here, $4 million.
Oh, I'm just verbalizing that. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. You see, we have, we've had other public entities where that balance looks really great, and then experience goes south for a year or half a year, and suddenly that balance goes down significantly. So it's kind of like, you're in a good spot with yours. I wouldn't suggest you try to draw from it. In fact, the county, if you recall, has drawn it down.
Yes, yes.
And you went through the prosecutor's office to do that legally.
Right, we did. $2 million up to $1 million.
But at any rate, you have adequate reserves on hand for your, for your health.
For the same state.
Yes, I prefer to keep the reserves.
Oh, yeah.
Why do you say unreported?
This is that phenomenon of where if you've got people that incurred a claim, say, in November, or I should say, what did I say, October before? And their claims aren't paid until December. It means there are claims out there that have occurred, but they haven't been reported yet.
It's like your charge card.
Yeah, okay, that was a good way of looking at it, a charge card.
So we have $4 million, one and a half is probably already spent.
Right.
And that thing can go down in a heartbeat, so I would not suggest you try to draw it down. Okay, so that is how we get to that starting point. So we have your current plan designs. If you turn to page six, and this is where we wanted to do some modeling for you. So the way to read this, I know it seems like it got a lot more jumbled when we started putting more words on it, but the top half of the, of the illustration from left to right is that current accrual or gross premiums of $9,553,000. This is the one we just showed you, is your current budget number based on $700,000.
And those are current employee deductions and current county contributions.
The whole ball of that.
Yes.
And we're showing everything on a bi-weekly basis, since that's how you do your payroll and whatnot. So you do have monthly COBRA rates, but we won't confuse the issue. The centered box, if you will, is where you have your employee contributions. So what's, employees are paying today currently, and that's just over a million, so employees are paying about 10 and a half percent of the budget number. The net county obligation is the eight and a half million over in the right. And that's about 89 and a half, so that's-
Would you, is the average employee contribution in government?
In government, that is a good question. Do we have that figured with us?
Do you want the-
It is, you're a little below.
A little below.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that it's generally between 12 and 15.
It's a certain one, too?
Yeah.
All right.
And she finally increased.
That's usually what the other county entities or government entities like ourselves usually charge, charge a little bit more than what we do.
Give an idea, in that instance, this is hard, because we were showing you the bi-weekly, but the, the average contribution for a single person, based on the Mercer survey for 2014, is $80 a month. And yours, when you take yours annual, I just happen to know it's like $52 for the single. And that $80 a month equates to about 14%.
That's what I thought. I thought it was between 12 and 15%.
And so you're 10 and a half in an aggregate. And so you're a little, you're a little better than-
So we're getting a good year.
There's this 50, what?
It was about, yours, when you take that 24, 26, and turn that into a month, that's, that turns into $52,000, I believe. Then you take the, the family, and the average monthly for a family is $283,000.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
That's a big difference.
And that's more like 26% of the rate.
That was one of the reasons why I encourage and Willis recommends as well for the additional surcharge for the plans to have spouses on the side. And, and we started at low on that with the idea that you can increase that gradual rate every year to reach the norm, just so that it fit everybody, if you know what I'm saying.
So it's a, it's a pretty well-priced benefit for-
And not to mention just the cost-sharing between the county and the employee, but our other benefits are very rich compared to most, too, as far as our copays and deductibles and those type things are very, very good.
What is our family? 76, 41 times 2.
Where is that? Where do you see that?
What, you times it by 26 and divide by 12.
76, 41 times 26, divided by 12, it's $166,000.
So that's really-
So, and I will say this about the Mercer survey. It's a very well-respected survey in our industry, and we've been using it for almost 20 years. We don't see that family percentage in our clients and other clients that we're familiar with being quite so significantly higher. The 14% on the employee is probably a little low. We tend to see them get a little closer to the high teens to 20% as a target, at least for government entities. So we don't see this dramatic thing always on, on the family itself. But what's happened in the meantime, Mercer continues to do just single and family. We cannot ignore the fact that an emphasis on spousal coverage has been very, as you recall, we talked about last year. Spouses that have coverage available where they work and are selecting your plan has gotten almost into a contest, if you will. Employers saying, "Okay, we're going to go as far as excluding coverage for such spouses who have coverage available someplace else, because clearly they're, they've got a better deal here."
Oh, by far.
By far. Or putting a surcharge of sorts in, which is what the county has really done. They put kind of a, they've kind of beefed up a little on the spouse and family rates contributions for the employees to recognize that.
You know, I misunderstood that. I thought if you had a spouse that had insurance, that's what they had to go off.
They do. No, no, that is the case with us, yes. But before, when they had a choice, of course, obviously, they opted out of their employer, because it was the better deal here.
The employer maybe didn't give them the right.
Yes, they did. I had several, they had several people complain to me because, "Oh, we're gonna lose our $300 a month now that their employer paid us to not take their insurance." So, you know, it was a racket. It is.
So-
It's good financial planning.
And their play, yes. And for the other employers, too, you know.
So what we're showing on this particular page, it's always that question of what if we do nothing? What if we assume the 8.8% increase and not, and not share that with anyone? Well, what we're showing you here is what we're calling a do-nothing with, with the-
You see, it's on the same page?
Yes.
Page, page six. Although we are adjusting the employee, spouse, and families for that spousal surcharge slightly. So there's, that's why you see a little bit down here as a 2%. But those other employees are not, single employees and employees with children would have no increase. So their rates above will be the rates below.
And this model is showing the county absorbing the entire increase of the 8.8%. And this is, you know, we're not suggesting any of these, we're just giving you examples of what you have to choose from.
Oftentimes, the question comes up, what if we just assumed it all?
Right.
So this is the one that's, I don't think this is realistic, or that doesn't even seem equitable. If you go to the next one, however, page seven, now we're showing the county assuming the 8.8% on the gross rates, but then sharing that 8.8% with all other employees, and then also assuming the spousal surcharge increase of 4.4%.
So basically, the employee and the county is sharing, splitting the 8.8%. So it would increase 4.4% for each.
So therefore, you would end up with a net lower right corner here for the county of 8 and a half%. So you take the gross column, less the employee column, get to the net recorded cost count. This is assuming the same plan design. So we were talking a little bit about, well, if we wanted to try to take a little off of that 8.8, what could we really do to the plan that's not going to be-
And there are a lot of things that we could do, but we wanted to do the, the change that would affect employees the least. So it'll affect the least amount of employees in the least amount of way.
And it'll be in the spirit of, if you go to page eight, we're talking about raising the out-of-pocket maximum exposure slightly.
Could we stay on this page?
Sure, absolutely.
I don't understand what you're splitting forward. It's like 50% each.
Right, if you look at the bi-weekly at the top under the PPO, the current plan is 24, 26, and the county portion is 49, 199. And if you go down to 2016, the PPO employee only is 26, 39, and the county portion is 53, 529. So that's each, the employee and the county is splitting the increase of the 8.8%. So each, the employee portion and the county portion is splitting the increase about, you know, so instead of being the county, 8.8% the employee and the county is split.
Down below, the annual increase would be 835,000?
That would be the, that would be the gross amount.
Yeah, and then, but the county's picking up 726,000 of that, which doesn't sound like half.
No, it's a proportionate increase where if the, if the county's gross rates are going up 8 and a half percent, the employees' rates are going up 8 and a half percent. So it's not- So it's not to assume the full cost impact, because that would be eight hundred and thirty-five. So it's trying to be fair to the net, to say it's eight and a half plus that splitting on the spousal part.
Right. I have to think about it?
Yeah, I know, this is, we would, we really.
The gross numbers don't make sense to me, but I have to think about it.
We wanted to give you, we didn't want to give you a bunch of.
I think what it really is, I think what it really is, is half of ten percent rather than half of the total.
We're splitting the increase.
Because they only pay ten percent, we pay ninety percent.
Correct. And that's going to remain the same.
Right.
It's just.
So it's half of ten percent for them, and half of ninety percent for us. Does that make sense?
No.
Well, it's a total increase of the eight point eight percent.
Yeah, it's splitting the, the increase, it's splitting it in two places, the employee and the employer.
But the employee only pays ten percent of the total, and it goes.
And that's always going to be, but the increase, though, is going to increase four point four percent here and four point four percent here.
Okay, I got it.
And they're still going to pay ten percent.
Right. Okay. Really paying a very low percent.
So like the twenty-four, twenty-six at the top is going to increase four point four percent, so for a single plan, who, the employee who paid the single plan for the PPO paid twenty-four, twenty-six for paid last year. This year, if we accepted this proposal, then the employee would pay the twenty-six, thirty-nine. So it, the.
You're sharing.
You're sharing. So the employee would feel a four point four percent increase of deductions through their payroll deduction.
It's still a minimal.
Absolutely. It's very minimal. It's very minimal.
Although we get a lot of pushback.
It's four point four of ten percent of the total for them, and four point four of ninety percent for the county.
Well, their, their payroll deduction is going to increase four point four percent, but at the total and the end of everything, the employee is still only paying ten percent, and the county is paying ninety.
When you, when you put them all together to the bottom line.
Right. The percents are the same.
There could be various percentages and tiers, but the net-net for the county is you cut that target.
Right.
And the county has set out a target, is this used to be, this ten and a half percent used to be much lower.
Mm-hmm.
And the county consciously, several, several boards ago, so we've really got to make an effort to make that a higher percentage.
Yeah, and it was ugly, too.
It's still a good percentage for an employee.
It is.
For the employee, for the employee share, it's an excellent, excellent benefit.
Oh, my God, yes.
I mean, it absolutely is.
Yeah.
So to give you at least something to think about option-wise, and I think this is where we ended up kind of leaning toward a pension, because this is, on page eight, this is in the spirit of, for those that use the plan, they could potentially pay a little more out of pocket.
Right. For the, for the people who use the plan a lot are the ones that would be affected by that.
So under the HMO plan, where it's a thousand dollars a single and two thousand dollars a family, under the current, we were suggesting an extra five hundred dollars per person, a thousand dollars a family on both the HMO and the PPO.
And I would still like to mention that these, even with the increase, is still very, very low compared to most out of maximum out-of-pocket.
The employee is cheaper solved, right?
I mean, yes.
So you're one of them, right?
Yeah, I can give you a quick out-of-pocket.
Would we really be, I don't want to carry on, very, very low, yes.
A common out-of-pocket for a PPO plan is twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
So you're, you're still well under that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, on the, I'm sorry, yeah, on the PPO, we were suggesting going up from seventeen fifty, thirty-five hundred to the twenty-two fifty, forty-five hundred, so get a little closer to that benchmark.
Why, why, can you explain that a little bit, why, what is more than the other?
Yeah, the, the plans themselves, your HMO plan and your PPO plans are different plan designs.
The, the PPO, you can go out of network. The deductible is a little bit higher with the PPO, and the co-pays are higher, and also the maximum deductible's higher, but it costs the employee and the county less overall.
And a health, and an HMO does not allow for out-of-network utilization.
Right. And it costs the employee a little bit more, but it also costs the employee less when they go to the physician or use the insurance. The deductibles are lower, the original deductible is lower.
So now I want to just add one little point on this page, is it's going to confuse everyone, but for Commissioner Klein's benefit, I want to explain what we did a year ago on what they call the MOOP.
The MOOP?
The MOOP. And everybody, everybody's got a MOOP now, thanks to healthcare reform. It's the maximum out-of-pocket.
Oh.
And healthcare reform required that all expenses, co-pays, deductibles, coinsurances, all go toward a MOOP, which is a little out of the ordinary for what benefit plans have done over the years, because prescription drug co-pays, for example, never counted toward a MOOP.
And neither did co-pays.
Right. So as, as time went on, healthcare reforms said, oh, no, we want people to have a maximum lid here somewhere. So you, as an employer, as every other employer, had a choice of changing your out-of-pocket maximums to account for this new piece of prescription drugs that would come to it, which was kind of complicated, but it was okay, MMO could do it. But you elected to go the route that a lot of others did, too, and set up a separate MOOP for your prescription drugs, such that the sum of the medical and the drug were within the confines of healthcare reform. So as we look now, saying, we're going to consider raising the out-of-pocket max on the medical, we'll need to take the drug MOOP down to the same extent.
Okay.
So that the sum of the two are still there. You're going to have more activity and more accumulation on the medical MOOP than you are on the prescriptions, I mean, for the vast majority of your people.
Right.
There will be some of your members that use the prescriptions way more than the medical, but that's going to be a much smaller, smaller number. So this was a case of the, what we thought would be the least painful option to consider in bringing the cost down, so.
Can, can I repeat what I think was said, and have you correct me?
Sure.
Because I'm not sure, right? We have a separate MOOP for drugs.
Right.
So if we increase the percentage that the employee pays, we have to decrease the MOOP by the same amount.
The drug MOOP.
Just the drug.
Right. If we take the medical MOOP up, the drug MOOP's got to go down, so that we don't breach the healthcare reform limits.
All right.
You know, I just printed something off my computer last night, but I haven't read it yet. MOOP, I mean, that's a strange terminology.
I'll tell you, this is.
I like it. I like it, to think of a minimum, or, you know, minimum or maximum, I guess it is.
I've been doing this for thirty years, and it used to be a lot simpler. There's nobody moving parts now. We were thinking, okay, we got to raise the maximum, and we got to drop the drug MOOP.
You know what, they're going to be moving more.
Yeah. Absolutely. So what we wanted to show you here on page nine is what happens when we do that. We will have a plan design change category here in the middle of the equation of nine point nine eight eight. So we're essentially saying it's worth a one point two percent reduction, such that we would bring the increase on the eight point eight down to seven point six. And that starts us with a whole new set of pages then. Okay, so now we're looking at pages ten through twelve, with, with ten through eleven, with the same type of scenario we had before, where the county assumes the full liability, with the exception of splitting that spousal piece. So that would be not one we're recommending, because that would be, you know, a little harder on the county, as well as the people without spouses. But more so, we're looking at page eleven, which is what I think we're zeroing in on as a recommendation, in working with Susan, and that is to increase the cost proportionally, meaning that the seven point six percent will be passed on to the entire county, employees and the county, and then split the additional amount for the spousal coverage levels, the employee, spouse, and the family. And that'll net out, then, for a total reduced increase for the county of seven point four percent, or six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And that's down from what was seven hundred and twenty-six thousand on our non-plan change. So we're knocking off just about a hundred thousand dollars of, of liability, if you will. These are, these are budget-type numbers, employee numbers. It's based on where the current employees have elected coverage. So your open enrollment could swing that slightly. We haven't seen dramatic shifts from the HMO to the PPO, or PPO to the HMO. So, but this is a snapshot of how this could look for two thousand and sixteen. I think this is in our conversation with Susan, I think where we want to.
Now, also, just so that you know, you have the ability, if you would like to look at the county portion, you know, changing the differences between the ten point five percent that the employees pay, if you'd like to raise that to twelve, eleven percent, we can also change the co-pays, those types of things. Tend to upset your employees a little bit more.
Yes, it does.
So that, the reason that I actually recommend this one is just because, you know, there's going to be costs, there's going to be inflation, which are things we cannot help, but this reduces the amount of that cost by, with the least possible impact on employees and the county. But of course, we can still change that, you know, if you'd like to raise that ten percent to, to twelve, eleven percent, to save the county in additional funds, you know, that's entirely up to you.
The twenty-dollar payment for a.
The co-pay.
Yeah, the co-pay. But if you see a specialist, it's.
It's forty. That's with the PPO plan.
Yeah, and that seemed to be a big jump, and most people now call themselves specialists, most doctors.
A, a lot of them do. Well, and I'll tell you something that I encountered going to the doctor, I very, very seldom ever go to the doctor, but I did have to go to the doctor, and it was at the Cleveland Clinic, and I received a bill for a facility fee.
Yeah.
And it was a forty-dollar fee to use their building, which was totally allowable and acceptable, and I had to pay for that. And I was not happy. But the reason that they can do that is because Medicare allows it, which is a shame that Medicare would allow such a, a fee. You know, it's, it's a bogus fee.
So if you go to a specialist at the clinic, or I think other facilities charge, too.
You can go anywhere, yeah.
It would be eighty dollars just to go and see the person?
Well, no, not everybody charges that facility fee. That's only just occasionally, you'll, you'll come across that. But if you go in, and also, this is for the PPO, for the people who choose to have the PPO, which I will say is probably, we have eight hundred people covered, two hundred probably take the PPO. You know, it's very low compared to the HMO. But your co-pays for the PPO is twenty dollars for a physician, forty for a specialist, and the HMO is ten dollars for a regular physician, and twenty-five for a specialist. To me, that ten-dollar co-pay is dirt cheap.
Oh, my, yes.
I mean, you know, generally, it would be a.
It is.
Tell me why someone would choose the PPO.
So that they can go out of network. So for instance.
If they have a doctor that's out of network.
Right. And this is what I tell people when they come in for new employee orientation, the only reason really that you would want to take the PPO is if you wanted to go to university hospital, main campus, because most, all other areas, all the Cleveland clinics accept the HMO, and most doctors do. Now, occasionally, there will be a pediatrician's office or some type of specialist that will only take the PPO, and the reason is, is because it's based on their contract with Medical Mutual, but it's because they can then charge you more. They're going to get more money in their pocket, and that's why they would only contract with the PPO.
Okay.
So for the, for me, and what I recommend to people, you know, the HMO is by far going to save you more money in the long run, that's why you want insurances to save you in a catastrophe disaster.
Why, why do we charge, I think it's called a co-pay?
The co-pay.
Ten for HMO and thirty, forty for.
Twenty. Twenty, twenty for the PPO.
Because they charge.
And the, the PPO costs you less, so therefore, you pay a little bit more when you go to the doctor, and they cut the balances out.
And then for the HMO, for the specialist, just how much?
Twenty-five.
But it's forty for.
Forty for the PPO. But remember, you're paying more for your premiums for the HMO, so your co-pays are a little less, and with the PPO, your premiums are a little less, therefore, you pay a little bit more. So the PPO also works well for people, young people, if you don't ever go to the doctor, they just kind of want it for, on reserve, for, you know, if they really need it. Saves them a little bit more out of their paycheck.
Or it's just that you're used to doing it that way, and that's what you do.
Yeah, and, and a lot of times, people have that, and they don't even know why they have it.
No, I agree.
That have had it for several years.
I'm a classic example.
Some people will do it for being able to go out of network, because rainbow babies is.
Right. Rainbow babies is one, but it's not an exception. But all the outerline UH campuses do accept Medical Mutual now.
Yeah, that's confusing.
Like African General and those, or, and right here in Ravenna, you know, they're all fill-ins of UH, and they all accept Medical Mutual.
Do you know, Susan, I wonder how many people really are cognizant of that at the time? You know, I think if you.
Well, Susan does a very good job.
Well, maybe this is a false claim.
Well, since I've been here, I, I really, education to me is key with all the new employees that have started, but there's probably a lot of employees here that have had the same plan and don't even know what their options are. You know, I've, I've had it, I'm going to stick with what I've got, you know, because they don't.
I'm a classic, but I, I guess I'm, you know, thinking the PPO is, right, you go out of network and so you, you got that headset.
But even, you know, I have, I have a daughter in college in Kentucky, and I have the HMO, but Medical Mutual with the HMO or the PPO has what's called First Health Network on the back of your insurance card. And I, she goes and pays a ten-dollar co-pay if she's sick, you know, I went on Medical Mutual's plan and found there's doctors almost everywhere that accept that First Health. And so she just goes to the doctor, and she pays her co-pay, and they charge us the same as if she were here.
Okay.
It's interesting, because when you go to a physician, often there are other Dr. Billis that come in.
Absolutely, and this is a very big problem.
And they may not be in a network.
Like, for instance, if you go, let's say you have an emergency and you go to Robinson. Robinson accepts our insurance, but while you're there, you're going to have some x-rays and some blood work. The blood work's going to get sent to a lab. The x-rays are going to be read by some other doctor that's contracted, and nine times out of ten, those doctors don't accept Medical Mutual.
No, right.
So then the employee, or who, the patient, gets these big, large bills, asks people bring me their bills, and we try to sort that out. And to me, that is just unconstitutional.
Well, it is.
That Robinson would employ or send out these things when a person's under distress to somebody who's not under contract.
It speaks to the fact that seventy-five percent of people in this county go out of the county, because they don't have.
And that's why, that's why.
Yeah, because it's such a shiny run.
Well, hopefully, that'll change now, right?
I mean. I know they were bought.
Yeah.
So they've been bought by UH.
Well, those doctors that are, I don't like read the x-rays, they're not in network.
Right.
They're, they're not in network. For instance, my husband had an emergency, went to the ER, we ended up getting a bill from one of the ER doctors. His insurance wrote them a letter and said, you know, please honor and charge them the costs that would, that you would have charged had you been contracted with the insurance, and they refused. They charged them the full price because they could. And I think that's why they don't contract.
But the PPO would cover that, because it's out of network.
Uh, no.
It's one of the contributing factors Robinson would down the trees.
Right. They would pay, you would still have to pay twenty percent of that. Well, yeah, because, exactly. But if the doctor doesn't contract with anybody, then you're going to pay the full price, then you'll have to turn around and send that bill to Medical Mutual, and Medical Mutual will send you back, you know, so much.
Could I ask again, just so clear, because I'm not sure what you just said?
Okay.
If you have a PPO and the doctor that doesn't-
Doesn't contract.
Then that should be covered.
Right, but-
But some of them are not affiliated with it.
But under the PPO, if you go out of network, there's no co-pays. You're just going to pay a flat 30% of whatever they charge. So if you go to this doctor and he has no contracts, he might charge you $1,000 for whatever he sees you for, then you're going to have to pay the $1,000, and the Medical Mutual will reimburse you 70% of that.
So you'll get a benefit, it's just not much reduced.
If you happen to be HMO, under those same circumstances, what would happen?
Then you would not get the 30%. So that's when you, you have to be very careful if you go to Robinson and say you're not sending-
You'd pay the $4,000.
You would pay the $4,000.
Okay, there's a little-
You want to hear-
A little additional benefit to being in the PPO.
Yeah.
There is, there is.
And the industry, just so, in case you hear about this, and I would advise against this if it were presented to you, out-of-network reimbursements are now, insurance carriers are promoting that they be reduced down to the Medicare funding level.
Oh, wow.
Which is a-
Is that going to happen?
Well, carriers are walking into employers and saying, would you like to have your out-of-network be reduced down to just what the Medicare level is? And what that does, that creates a real problem for somebody who does go out of network because now that allowable number is much lower. I think that that's, in my opinion, that's, that's, that's not right.
In that case, would it be wise to go to the PPO?
I think it's just a-
Six of one, half a dozen of the other.
It really is, you know, if you, you know, if you're going to go to the doctor often, you know, then paying those $10 co-pays make a big difference versus paying the 20 and that type thing. You know, also, once you've met your deductible, with the HMO, you're paying 10% versus the 20 with the PPO. You know, what are the odds that you're going to go to out-of-network? You know, it's just, it's really individual's decision, it's kind of how.
For right now. What did you say before? He just said something prior to him speaking, speaking about the PPO.
About the PPO's co-pays?
The point that we just made with PPO?
No, prior, just prior.
You see, if you go out of network on the HMO, you won't get any of that reimbursed at all. So it's kind of a, that's a little, that's a little harsher plan.
Yeah, if you're well most of the time, but you get a catastrophic illness or something, you can be very vulnerable.
Oh, you can be very vulnerable, you absolutely can. That's why I think education is so important. You know, if I were to go to Robinson today for a doctor's visit and they want to draw blood, I'd sure make sure that that lab was covered under our insurance. So it's just education.
You have some person drawing the blood, they don't know.
No, no, they don't know.
You would need to- You're, I mean, given your experience with it.
Oh, absolutely, because I know.
You would.
And that's why I want to educate.
But the person going out there, they would have absolutely, you know, no decision.
But I do try to educate people, you know, anybody that I have to listen.
And many people are reading the x-rays out in Australia or somewhere.
Yeah, you don't know where they are. So I think, you know, to solve that would be the-
I write, you know, you sign the form for release of treatment. I'm taking a writing on their x-rays and lab work to be done by contracted professionals because we did get stuck with an ultrasound.
And I think, I think that, like, if you have meetings at Robinson-
We haven't had it ever since, I don't know if it's because we're writing that or not, but-
But if you all had meetings, if you all had meetings at Robinson, I think it's important to talk to those healthcare officials and let them know how important it is to have people, you know, that it's certainly insured.
So that would change, though, is your entry there now, right?
We don't know, that's what she's saying. We don't know, it's all about hospital management. So if you're ever in a position to talk to hospital officials, you need to let them know that this goes on because they may or may not know, they may know it goes on and on.
Well, you're right, because they-
But they need to know how important it is when they do these contracts.
Don't get me started talking about Robinson, the administrator of the trustees. Anybody that can cost their entity a million-dollar fine, it's not, does not settle.
With the economy and healthcare reform is costing insurance and providers so much money, they're just scrambling to find out how to charge any way they can.
Agreed. Are we, not that I'm trying to rush you.
Have you decided anything? I mean, do you quite-
No, no, we have a, we have a three o'clock here.
Okay.
And I don't want to crash.
I think your suggestion is-
For page 11?
Yes.
Okay. And then, did you want to take a little bit of time to decide on the reinsurance?
A stopwatch?
The stopwatch.
Yeah, we'll get you the data on that, because that's not something that, that wouldn't hold up your open enrollment at all, but.
Are you good with this, Todd? Page 11? So I can start?
Here we have 100, 700-plus thousand.
Well, the 600 is better than the 700.
The 6.7.
The last bit of news in this report at page 12 is your dental remains unchanged for 2016.
Right, it's the same.
It's a part of the guarantee.
Okay, so I'm good to go ahead and start the plan from the raw.
Can I throw one more little tidbit you might be interested in hearing about? You heard perhaps about the Cadillac tax?
Yes.
So in each scenario, we took the current plan and the alternate plans, and you are not going to hit the Cadillac tax under either one prior to 2026, which is as far as we go.
Yeah, I think that's really good news.
It is good news, that's great news, so that's one you don't have to worry about. I'll leave this with you if you'd like to see.
One thing you don't have to worry about is-
Do you have extra copies of this?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll leave this one with you.
Just one left for the shared file.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Susan.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
After Jeff, we need to, the building department, we need to pick your- Oh, yes, you want to do that now? Well, we could.
You can adjourn because- Well, Jeff is here, right?
But he's still, he's coming back down. Yeah, we have, we're going to adjourn now, but we need to do this first, though, right? Yes. The building?
Yes. The general entry.
Yes. All right, so is there a motion to hire? Do we do this in the session?
Well, I want to discuss it in the executive session.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion for executive session? I so move.
Second.
Real call, please, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Is it employment?
Yes. Employment, yes, employment, yes. I make a motion that would come out of the executive session.
And we can't announce this publicly until we contact this person, so there's no action right now.
That would be, Maureen, to say that, right? No, yes, we need to exit executive session. I did, I made the motion to exit. Is that called?
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Action?
Well, I thought there was, but evidently there's not.
You can't until you confirm with the individual.
Well, we're going to offer the job of building director to someone, and we'll see if that person is accepting of it and whether to. But I don't know, so we discussed what we're going to offer to the person at. Oh, we did not discuss that. Are we? We did not discuss salary. No, we did not. We should have done that. Do you want to go back into executive session? Because if you're going to make an offer, you need to know-
Is Jeff here?
All right, let's see Jeff first, because he's been waiting. He came the first time and waited. No, you're right, you're right, okay. Now he's waiting again, so. All right, we probably need to do that before. Absolutely, yes, we do. Before we adjourn, so.
Do we have the ad that we placed, sometimes in the ad will-
Give a salary range.
Which we probably should have.
Oh, okay, I can find it.
Yeah, get your ad for Sam.
Okay.
And then, shall I exit? Wait, no, we want to go into, well, we have to get back on to get into executive session again, how's this going to work?
Usually, staff meetings aren't taped.
I know staff meetings, but we need to decide on a salary for this person that we're going to-
Do you want to just pause and then I can go grab it, or first, or?
We could, all right, we'll pause. Okay, we'll pause. I don't know, we didn't discuss that with him at all. Either.